April 8.
Did you say March 4?
I said 8. April 8, yes. Living in the past. Are there any public comments about issues not on the agenda tonight? I don't have any cards for that. Seeing none, we will move to the first item on the public hearing agenda, which is PC 13-027, Pavilion Park 2, request for an 11-lot subdivision zone change and geologic hazards review. We have a commission report.
The applicant would like to continue the hearing until April 22nd to address some concerns of the neighbor regarding stormwater. Can you hear me better? Can you hear me now?
No.
Is your mic on?
It is on.
Uh-oh.
Electronic failure.
All right. Is this better?
Testing. Nope.
Hello.
No testing.
Meeting's closed.
Everything's denied.
I'm on it.
And now we will entertain you with a musical interlude.
There are seats up front there if you'd like to have a seat.
We saved the expensive seats for those that came in last.
They don't want to sit up there. Okay, I heard a really bad joke today.
And the city has continued to work with the applicant to address those concerns and that neighbor as well. And they would like to continue the public hearing for that subdivision's own change until April 22nd in order to have a complete application addressing those neighbor concerns.
Okay. Thank you. We do have a couple people who would like to speak regarding this item. Due to the few people we have in the audience tonight, we will be limiting public comment time to three minutes per person on each of these issues. First person speaking will be Tracy Owens.
I have to sit with her back so we can't get out. Hi, I'm Tracy Owens. I live across the street from the said construction area. And I was here at the last one. My concern is, as always, the smaller, the smaller sized lots adds cars to our area. And I am directly across the street. And where they want to put in the road hits right where my driveway backs out. So you add more cars, you add more danger. I have very young children and we already have so many problems with speeding. And that right there adds three more houses. An average house has two to four cars. So my concern is that. And we have always had a water issue with drainage. And where does it go? So that is my concern. I don't think that that should happen.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person speaking on this issue is Linda Strohacker.
I again was here last year. And my house is the piece of property that's adjacent to the proposed piece of property.
Your name?
Oh, Linda Strohacker.
Yeah.
And first of all, I'd like to thank the city very much for sending people out to look at our property. Todd Martinez, Gordon Monroe, and Eric Hand all came out and looked at the problems I was talking about. And I thank the city very much. You seem to be understanding what I'm going through. Even with less water coming onto my property, I am concerned about the water that is coming on already, that it's picking up chemicals from the road driveways and that water dumps openly onto my property. Also chemicals from people's yards that will end up in my property. And I don't use any pesticides really at my house because we have animals that are in our property. So that is a concern. Also rezoning to R6. My property sits southeast. And as the more houses go up, I'm getting sunlight blocked from my property in the backyard. Right now, we get maybe three hours of sunshine in the back. And as they build more properties and buildings close to the edge of our property, I'm getting less and less sunlight, which keeps my backyard more damp from the water. That's what I have to say.
Thank you. Are there any other people that have comments on this particular item on the agenda?
Can we make a comment?
Don't see who this is the answer discussion.
So we'll close the public comments on this item. We have a request by the applicant to continue this hearing to April 22nd.
I would so move.
With the public comment period remaining open.
Here to remain open.
Yes.
Yes, you can because once there's a second, it's a discussion and you can.
All right.
We have some discussion.
I was just gonna make a comment that I'm glad that it's extended to the 22nd or continuance. I'm hoping that when they come back with a continuance, that it's not just about the water. The more I've studied the transportation plan that's coming up too, and I see that Pease Road is a collector road. My concern still, and I'm hoping I see this, I suggested that they don't have the driveways going out on the main road. She addressed something about her driveway comes out on the Pease Road. And I just hate to keep seeing roads for the future plan where people back out on the major collector roads. And I'm hoping I see that. I had suggested they put aside a road going into the properties rather than backing out on the Pease Road. Just a thought. I hope I see that change on there. That's it.
Other commissioner comments or discussion?
Question.
Yes?
Call for the question.
All right. Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner Henkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Commissioner McGiff?
Aye.
Commissioner Aguil?
Aye.
Chair Kidwell?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is PC 13-26, the Clackamas County Red Soils Master Plan, Planning File 12-01 and DP 12-01. And I have a statement to be read prior to continuing this item.
You do not have to read that this time since you read it last time.
I don't. Hearing.
Actually Laura, I suggested that we do that because we've had significantly revised application.
Yes.
So it's okay. I'd like to go ahead.
And there's been a lot of time too.
And there's been about four months since this was heard last. So I think it would be prudent.
So the public hearing on the land use application that we're considering tonight, the staff has prepared a report for this application and has made that report available to the public seven days before the public hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to each applicant's proposal. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report. The quasi-judicial hearing procedure that the commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown on the chart on the wall. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a speaker's card and give it to the planning staff before the hearing. Speakers will proceed in the order in which their card is received. You should fill out your address on the card so the city will notify you of its decision. For the public record, please begin all testimony stating your name. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain how and why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person may submit any written material while the public record is open on each application. Any written materials received by the city staff during the time period in which the record is open will be placed in the record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing must be presented to the city staff in order to become part of the record. If a person intends for PowerPoint presentation, oversight, poster boards, reports, pictures, or other exhibits used in their oral testimony to be placed in the record, copies must be submitted to the city staff while the record is open. If they are not given to the staff, they will not be included in the record. Any person wishing a continuance to present additional evidence or testimony or to keep the record open to respond to new evidence must make the request before the public testimony portion of the hearing is closed. If the planning commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue that you wish, that you may wish to appeal must be, must have been raised for the consideration of the city commission or Luba or both. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence that the city and all parties can respond, the issue will not be deemed appealable to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, the failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issues precludes an action for damages in circuit court. We now will open the record for the Oregon City File Number PC 13-026. Does any commissioner have any ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest, or bias, or any other statement to declare regarding this proposal?
No.
I spoke with the county's representative this afternoon to get, this morning, to get clarification on the fence.
Which fence?
The proposed iron fence. And she is going to be showing us something today.
Any other items to declare?
No.
Visited the site, the whole master plan site.
I'm familiar with the site. I've been to the Red Soils complex on several occasions. I have no bias regarding this proposal. Does anyone in the audience wish to question any of the commissioners about these disclosures? Hearing none, we will now commence with the planning staff report.
Thank you very much, Laura Turway, city planner. So I wanted to provide a brief overview of what the project was since it's been so long. This is an application for a master plan and a detailed development plan for the Clackamas County facility at Red Soils located off Beaver Creek Road as shown on the map. There's a few pieces to this application. The first piece is to amend the master plan to include the Silver Oak facility. That facility would be used for evidentiary storage for the sheriff's facility. As you can see on the screen, it's quite a large building. The detailed development plan, part of it, or the actual construction is for a few things. One is to change the use of that building from its previous use to the proposed use for evidentiary storage. And the second portion of that is to build a fence. When we were at our last planning commission hearing, the planning commission provided guidance to the applicant and the applicant decided to withdraw part of their application and replace it with a different fence. They were originally here with a 12-foot chain link fence in the location shown on red. So we're still looking at the same location, but the applicant has taken your comments and revised the fence to be an eight-foot wrought iron fence with some, a little bit of CMU on it as well. The fence will be in the same location. The applicant is proposing to mitigate that fence height with landscaping. You can see on the landscape plan, everything in green is proposed. And also that higher quality material. These are a couple of pictures of what that proposed fence will look like. You can see it quite well up here. So it'll have these posts.
Can you make that larger? Because that's what really helped me. From that small picture, I was unable to really see that.
Sure. Well, I think if you just zoom in at the bottom, I'll work to. There you go. So you can see the eight-foot wrought iron fence right here. There's a pedestrian pathway, as we know, that is currently existing from the end of Red Soils Court to the adjacent Hill and Dell Park. So this is the view down that pathway. The applicant provided a few other different views so you could tell what the fence will look like as well.
Is the current chain link fence, the little four-foot one there, is that going to be replaced and/or it'll stay there also?
It's existing and it'll stay.
Okay.
So there you can see a couple other views. The fence is back here, you can see slightly. All right. In order to build this fence, they still need some adjustments to the code. They need, our fence code currently allows development to build a six-foot tall fence. So they will need an adjustment to build an eight-foot tall fence. They are also still pursuing the adjustment to allow the replacement of nine existing fences. They're on this map here, you can see them. Everything highlighted in the blue, yellow, and orange. The fence heights, there are two 24-foot fences. As you can tell, there are one 12-foot fence. And then the remaining seven fences are all, I'm sorry, six fences are all eight feet in height. So most of the fences are all located around the jail. The applicant is asking to replace those fences if needed. If the applicant were to move the fence in a different location, this adjustment would not apply. They'd have to comply with our standards. If the applicant wanted to build a taller fence, this adjustment would not apply. It's only allowing them to build exactly the same height that's currently there. If it's a currently chain link and they want to change it to a different material, they can. This is just applying to height.
Before you go any further, the orange 12-foot fence is only that little portion down there.
Yep.
Not the little dash line that's the perimeter of their property.
Correct. It's just around the jail.
It's the same color. I just wanted to make sure that people understood that it's.
Perfect.
That little piece, not.
Mm-hmm. So in response to the planning commission's direction, the applicant has removed the adjustment to allow new chain link fences. They've removed the adjustment to allow the existing chain link fences to be replaced to allow new fences taller than six feet, other than the one proposed at Silver Oaks. And they've removed the request to do a 12-foot tall fence at Silver Oaks. And they have removed the request to install new razor or barbed wire on site. They still have in there a request to replace existing barbed wire on site. There was a revised staff report that was sitting on the dais for you with one change. And these are the, these are the changes proposed. That the applicant will have three months after occupying the Silver Oak facility to complete all of the construction before, occupying it for evidentiary storage use. So this way offices are permitted use. If they want to get in there and do office, they can do that. So their timeline to have that fence and all the associated landscaping would be three months from when the evidentiary storage use is proposed, is completed. And that is my staff report. City staff recommends approval with conditions. Are there any questions I can answer for you or would you like to see those diagrams of the fence a little bit more?
Just real quick, Laura, can you go over the mechanism for holding the applicant's feet to the fire and getting all their stuff done three months after the CVO has been issued?
So we can go through code enforcement if it doesn't occur?
Because usually things like that, the CVO is the biggest motivator for getting things done. And sometimes when that gets lifted, things lapse, so.
If they wanted to use it for office right now, they could use the building for office without any approval from the planning commission.
Thanks. Are the colors that are shown in the proposed fence pictures, is that the proposed colors?
The applicant has a sample of the wrought iron fence material here. I don't know the answer. If it is black, I assume it is, but the applicant can clarify for you.
Any other staff questions from the commission?
I just have one. Condition number four, where you were telling us that that has been removed. Why?
It just affirms to number one now, which has that three months.
I see. Okay.
It was more of a duplicate. So when we read those sort of as a checklist, we know. But if it's already in there, we would just defer to condition of approval number one for that timeline rather than having it in both places.
So substantial approval of the conditions needs to be met prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy? Isn't that our usual modus operandi?
We usually go to issuance of a permit, yes. And then it all has to be met before occupancy. In this case, since they can already use the building for office, it is, once they start using it for evidentiary storage, that would be the time clock that starts the three months for them to complete that landscaping. So that way they could get into the facility to use it for evidentiary storage earlier. And then we have a definite timeline when we know that landscaping will get done.
Well, it would seem to me that if it's going to be used for evidentiary storage, which we all know, that they would want to have the fence up and all the other things done so that the facility would be secure. So I'm, I'm not understanding why there's a delay in getting the improvements.
You can change that condition of approval. We just gave them three months because we thought it was a reasonable timeframe to install that landscaping. But if you'd like to see it earlier, the three months.
Well, I just assume they're gonna have it substantially done before they actually get in there, since they want it to be secure. And I'm kind of throwing the fence and the landscaping kind of together because that's gonna be a security barrier.
Mm-hmm. So there would be no CVO. That's why our condition is based off when they start to use the facility.
Thank you. That was great.
Any other questions for the staff at this time?
Go ahead. I got one. Does it say you require any performance bond to rely on, that they would comply with additions of approval?
We do not require them to provide a performance bond, no.
Why is that?
You can require landscaping be done with the installation of the fence. And if they don't do that, they could, through our code, provide fee in lieu for that landscaping. And so we would have the money to install it if they never did install it. Or once they did install it, then we would give them that money back. No, we don't require a performance bond outright. Through that condition of approval, it gives them the flexibility to move in and then have three months to install that landscaping. And if they don't, we would go through code enforcement and then it would end up in municipal court.
I found my answer, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I know this is gonna be a little bit out of order, but to all of our friends in the audience, if your cellphone is still on, could you turn it off? It would just be great.
Or put it on vibrate.
Or put it on vibrate. We probably should have said at the beginning, but it is a little distracting. And everything you all have to say is really, really important and we really want to hear you without distraction. There's a chair right there. Come on up.
No, he said turn the volume up. Oh, I see what you mean. Yeah, we're not in control of the volume.
Yeah, we don't, they don't let us touch the volume.
We just have to lean into our mics when we.
The last time we talked about that, we had a loud noise.
Yeah, we almost killed everybody.
Do we have a presentation from the applicant?
Hi there. Becky Epstein from Sarah Architects.
Could you pull the microphone closer to you so others can hear?
I think it's bolted to the table.
But you can still go like this.
There we go. Becky Epstein, Sarah Architects, representing the county.
Kevin Poppin, Clackamas County Sheriff's Department. I oversee the Investigations Division.
Thank you.
Okay. I can jump right into answering questions if that would be a good place to start? Or do you want me to give some more background as to how we came up with this revised proposal?
This is your opportunity to say what you want to say.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a point of order here directed to the city attorney. Mr. Poppin is a next door neighbor of mine and he keeps his lawn mowing and I don't. So I just wondered if it would be appropriate for me to just excuse myself from the voting on this because of that factor. Is that a factor to be considered in this regard?
Well, do you think that you can make an unbiased decision even though he's your neighbor? Do you think you can look at the criteria and evaluate the criteria?
I could do that, but we've still got a problem with the lawns.
Well, I can't help it with the lawns.
Oh, here we go.
I'm all right with that. I just wanted to put it for the record.
I don't think lawn is a criteria that we're.
Listen, in my house, it's a big subject of discussion.
We'll send code enforcement out tomorrow.
He's with law enforcement, not law. Sorry, sorry. He's our microphone again, see?
So since we were here last December discussing the fence, at that time we were proposing chain link, the county has also been considering the other tenants that they will put in the building. And it will not just be the evidence department from the sheriff's department. They're thinking also of moving the state court's records facility, which is right now also on Red Soils Court. We're, they're leasing some room there. So that will also be brought into this building. And then perhaps emergency management also needing a secure area. So when we went back and looked at the fence, we still wanted to have a non-climbable material. And we looked at a wrought iron, and I can pass this if you guys want to take a look at it. It's wrought iron, flat metal bars, as you can see, it's, nothing is anti-climbable. Thank you. But this would be harder to get your fingers around to try and lift yourself up. And Kevin can talk more as to why the, we're asking for the height adjustment still. But to tie it integrally back to the building, we have spaced concrete, I don't have a mouse, concrete or CMU painted columns to match the color of the building that would run along the elevation and spaced about every 48 feet. And then also have some rhythm from the steel posts themselves in different sizes that would kind of break up the mass of that infill panel. Would you like to talk about the height?
Yeah, just real briefly, thanks for allowing me to speak on behalf of the sheriff's office tonight about the facility. We're, like she had mentioned, we're in the process of upgrading our facility. We're in a very old antiquated evidence facility, but it is on our current property, so it has 24-hour security. So they are excited about moving into the new facility. The storage of evidence is vitally important. Anyone that's followed major cases know how important evidence can be. And quite frankly, we store a lot of critical evidence. I can tell you. I can tell you, over the years, we've brought in massive amounts of controlled substances and large volumes of cash, so security is vitally important. We're committed to ensuring that everything within our authority to protect that chain of custody, because it is so important. What's unique about the facility is, what we found in doing some checking is, most evidence facilities are housed within the police facility itself. So a lot of, even around the region, if you look at Portland Police Barrows, or if you look at Gresham, when we did some checking, they're housed within, so they have kind of onsite 24-hour security. This site won't technically have that. There'll be more of an eight-to-four, eight-to-five, you know, kind of a daytime shifts that working in and out of there. So security is of a concern. Obviously, we're going to have other security measures in place, but again, going back to the 24-hour security, it's not going to be there. We do know that Oregon City Police Station is very close. You know, you could almost throw a baseball from the two sites, so we're blessed in that manner. But deterrence is a major consideration when housing evidence. Many times, this new facility won't have that round-the-clock security, like I mentioned. The fencing itself's not going to provide any guarantees that there won't be a breaching of that security. Anybody knows, if they're determined, you're going to get, you're going to breach an eight, a 10, a 20, a 40-foot fence. So this is just to provide that additional deterrence as one of the security measures we'll have in place. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions regarding security as it relates to the facility.
Amen?
In relation to the fencing material, how will it be installed towards the public? I mean, which part is going to be facing the public?
So the wire, the round wire, will be facing the building.
Okay. So it won't be a nice, simple ladder for people to climb?
No.
Oh. Okay, my other concern then is, since this is a park with people running and playing, is you have fairly sharp objects pointed towards them if they're, I mean, if you hold the, it up, you've got thin, narrow bars pointed towards where people might run into them, chasing a ball or whatever. I know that your, the picture that's up there right now shows a little fence, at least along the walkway, I think if you keep whiggling, it'll eventually pop up, but there it is.
Yeah.
It shows that little fence there, but does that go around the entire perimeter?
No, the existing fence now starts on Red Soils Court at the bottom of the cul-de-sac, and then wraps around the pedestrian path, and where, come back.
If you advance to the next one, there's, I think, a map of the site. Yeah.
I think back when it shows.
Well, that's, the building's there, right?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, yeah. So it starts right at the bottom of Red Soils Court, travels down like this, and follows the path, and then dies into the park, it's a little four-foot existing fence. As we put in the new one, what we'll do is, right where it meets this column, we'll end it right there, so that it won't travel along, there's no need for it, and we want to provide, we've provided, come back, additional landscaping in here, so we want to be able to plant that between the path and the new fence.
Right. Okay, I mean, generically, I have no problem with that fence, especially with adults around. I mean, there's a certain element of Darwinism in my philosophy of life, but, you know, four-year-old kids on roller skates, or 15-year-olds riding their skateboard down the thing and falling, I mean, I'm a little concerned that there's basically sharp edges for them to fall against. Mostly, I'm concerned about the liability issue, A, from us in the park, and B, you in the facility. If the four-foot fence continued, that chain link fence continued to cross the front of it, that would mitigate that entire concern. And additionally, I would think it would be useful for you, because then you've got a double-fenced enclosure. I mean, if people are hopping over that fence, you've already got, why are they there? What's going on? So that's my only real concern about the fencing material in and of itself. I think it's a much better idea than chain link. I mean, in my youth, I could go up a 12-foot chain link fence in about three seconds, so. So anyway, that's, I don't know if you can address that at this point.
Yeah, so the panels come in sizes that'll be custom-made for us, that will sit in between the support posts, and it comes tight to the post. The edges that you'll have, it'll end, it will end next to the column.
I'm not concerned about that, I'm concerned about that.
This piece, yes. I.
I'm not prepared to do it.
Yeah.
That's fine, I'm just, I'm putting that out there just as a concern. I mean, it's relatively close to the path, I can see kids, you know, throwing frisbees or whatever, and blam, you know, and, I mean, you run into a chain link fence, and everyone points and laughs at you, you run into that, and, you know.
They'd laugh harder?
Well, that's true, they would laugh harder, I admit that, yeah.
No, let's hope not. I guess I would be concerned if we left the four-foot fence, it would just act as a ladder, and you'd be that much closer to getting over the top.
Yeah, that's valid.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'm on the record as being concerned, but it's not going to make me say no.
There was also another question about installation. Oh, no, the colors, sorry. So we are proposing, you can see, we rendered it how we're proposing the colors, black for the infill material, and then the columns would be painted in the same color as the building, to be integrally tied that way.
And graffiti coated?
They would be anagrapiti coated.
Good.
Other questions or comments for the applicant?
All I kept thinking is, kids are dangerous themselves, no matter what you have.
Oh, I understand that.
Two more things, sorry. We're fine with putting in the fence at the same time as TCO, that's, we can, that's fine, and the landscaping too. And then there was another, no, I forgot. It'll come to me later when I'm sitting down.
All right, just real quick for the audience, the CFO and all that is certificate of occupancy. If a building doesn't have that, it can be built, but nobody gets to use it. So just letting people in, you know, out in the audience know what that acronym is all about, so. In this case, the building's built, so there's already an occupancy permit, it's changing the occupancy that's being affected.
Right, and you're right, we can occupy the building now for offices and some other storage, warehousing that we're doing in the building, so it's really only when evidence and then the state court records would go in that we would really want that fence to be up, so, yeah, we can tie it to when those go in.
Yes, I've got a question, Mr. Chairman. On security, is there going to be any video security there?
Yeah, we have several layers of security and, you know, some pretty elaborate alarms and some other security measures.
So that would be transmitted off-site to somebody looking at a monitor?
Yes, the county currently has a system that will tie into it.
Would you mind lowering your microphone directly toward you?
Sure, the county already has a system that it ties into and can be monitored from various locations.
On-site security is eight-to-four, you say?
Well, kind of a day shift. What happens routinely, though, is we bring in evidence all night long, so our deputies out on the road will stop and make an arrest, you know, a simple DUII arrest, or a traffic accident in which they take, they'll be there all the time, but, you know, basically occupancy-wise, you know, probably any early into the evening would be the latest someone's, you know, someone's staffed there.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I just want to say that I appreciate the fact that the county is interested in having a sort of a uniform look for their properties, because if you go and look at all the different fences and closures, it's pretty hodgepodgey, and I know that that wasn't under this current administration, it's been happening over time. So I think getting things to look the way the county wants the Red Soils canvas to look is probably beneficial to everyone in the long term, because it'll all, it'll look really great. The one that I was particularly puzzled about is the one that's got the canvas on the chain link fence, that's looking a little ratty, but maybe that'll be one of the ones that gets replaced right away. So just to clarify, the proposal is, is to have things the way they are, but as things get changed, then these fences will get changed out and.
If the building, the function that's inside the building gets rebuilt someplace else, or the building is changed, then that would be addressed at that time.
So like most of the current non-conforming fences around the jail, when you build the adult detention facility, those fences are going to morph because there'll be a new use.
To those codes that would apply when we go to do that, yes.
Yes.
I'd say anything that's really ugly, I think they should probably just get rid of it now.
Ugly is a subjective term.
Well, I think they know it kind of looks bad, too.
Can we pass funding for all that right now?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
I vote aye.
You know, I just wanted to comment, from my point of view, I appreciate your responsiveness to the concerns that were raised at the last hearing, and I appreciate that you've come back with a different fence proposal that really, from my point of view, is a far superior solution to what was originally proposed.
Maybe this will be a prototype for other areas around the county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now take comments. First, are there any recognized neighborhood association representatives that wish to speak?
Yeah, that's William.
William?
That's him right there, so.
You're on.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is William Gifford, I live in Oregon City. I am the land use chair for the Hill and Mill Neighborhood Association, in which this facility resides currently. Before I begin my concerns, I had to address a couple of procedural issues. One is the fact that there are no agendas available at the front over here, that when people come in, they don't know where things are happening on there. And I realize that often you only have one or two, if you're lucky, people in the audience, but when you're expecting a crowd, it seems to me as it would be courteous to have an agenda out there. Another procedural issue is that I have not received a hard copy of the proposed plan, and as land use chair, I think that would have been really helpful to have been able to review a hard copy of all of that. My bad, I guess, for not asking for a hard copy of it, but, and maybe that's not typical, but for something of this size, I think it would have been appropriate, because we just had our neighborhood association meeting last Tuesday night, and if this was available seven days before, we might have been able to have a chance for the whole neighborhood to take a look at it, other than just me.
Just a question, did you get a copy of the link?
No.
You didn't receive a copy of the link to the information?
Oh, yeah, I did receive, I received an email saying that, no, no, I didn't get a link to it. I had to find that online.
Usually, when the agenda comes out, there's a link?
You know, I was looking, and I didn't even see a copy of an agenda sent to me.
Yeah, I saw your name.
I was surprised.
I was pretty sure I saw your name on the list.
I'll look again.
The agenda went out.
The link's on, yeah, I'll look again.
All the agendas have that.
Let me echo a couple of other comments. One is that the, I also want to thank very much the applicant for the response for the neighborhood's concerns about this fencing material, and I think it's, they've really, they've really done a fine job. We, this is the first time I've seen the actual material, but I don't think that anybody's going to have any problem with any sharp edges or any danger, or I think that it's providing the security that's needed. And I think with the additional landscaping that's proposed in front of it, I think it's going to be perfectly adequate for our neighborhood concerns, and we're very pleased with that. I did have a couple of questions about the conditions of approval, and I don't have a copy of it, so I'm a little frustrated, but there was, but there was, thank you. One of the conditions of approval said that the, I'm not going to be able to find it, it has to do with replacing fencing for other places, not just for this, not just around the Silver Oaks, but additional fencing, says it will be to the existing.
Which number?
Number four.
Okay, number four. I apologize for taking the time doing that. The applicant may replace existing barbed or razor wire as needed, but there was something on here about replacing fencing, but it doesn't, but it does not specify the material used for the fencing.
Number four says.
That's correct. It does not specify material, because they did not propose any adjustments for any material, so it has to be a permitted material.
Okay, okay, so I'll understand that if they are going to be replacing existing fences, that it will be of approved code material, and not chain link, basically.
And then in the master plan, they can choose the code that was in place today when they do that fence replacement, or the code that was in place in 2005, so whatever was a permitted material when the master plan was approved.
Either one of them will allow chain link fence, is that correct?
That is not correct. In 2005, we did, it was 2009 that we stopped allowing chain link fence, but they could, so they can, with the master plan, they can always use the code that was in place when the master plan was approved.
When the original master plan was approved?
If it's in that original master plan boundary. For like Silver Oaks, since it's not, they have to use either today's code, or the code is in place when they do the development.
So nothing we can do about that. And I also want to get clear the concept of landscaping, does that include fencing, or is that hardscaping? When we talked about the fact that the landscaping has to be finished within three months.
Condition number of approval number one says all development proposed has to be completed within three months, that would include the landscaping and the fence as well.
Okay, I just didn't know if there was a distinction between landscaping and fencing.
Right, so we just made it more general to say everything.
And I also wanted to make clear, the applicant talked about the columns along the fence are going to be every 48 feet, is that correct? Mas o menos, okay, that's close enough. And I did not understand the acronym TCO, Temporary Occupancy.
Temporary Certificate of Occupancy.
Ah, the TC, okay, got it, that was the temporary part, that I didn't understand the T on it. And the last thing that I had to comment on was, and I have, this is on record because of our last, our last testimony, or the one before, I mean, this has been going on for a while, but at one point in time, we raised the issue of, of the whole master plan, and I was looking at the map, and it identified buildings 11, 12, 13, something, I'm not going to find the map real fast, let me.
On page nine?
On page nine, yes, number, buildings number 11 and 12, 11 and 12, says retail and office. And I'm wondering, would those be the areas that would not be considered for a library?
We can't answer that one.
Because I know that, I guess it was over a year ago, when the library was asking the county if they could, if they could purchase some of this land for a library, and they said no, because, and the only reason that they gave was because they didn't have a master plan. Now they'll have a master plan, but I don't see any footprint in here that would not be eligible for a library, and I'd be like, I'd like to ask the applicant if they're going to be able to look at it again. I don't know that the county should be in the retail business, but I guess that's their business. Is that your timer going off?
That's my timer.
How much time does the neighborhood have?
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
I gave you bonus time while you were looking up your application.
Thanks very much. Okay, so the question is still on the table as to, where could a library go on here? Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Just for the record, though, the material and of the fence and the height, at this point, the neighborhood doesn't have an objection to?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards for public comment, is anybody else wish to comment on this? Okay, would the applicant like to respond to the comments that were made?
Becky Epstein, Sarah Architects. So I have one correction to what I stated before. The court records is going to be moved into the building May, June of this year, so it will already be in place before we get evidence started, I just wanted to make that clear. And then the library, I believe, is not a conforming use on the site right now, is that an approved use for the Red Soils? I don't think it's.
Also the Red Soils?
For, yeah.
Was not included?
It was not included.
Red Soils master plan, this was a city facility on their property, was not part of the original master plan that was approved. They had identified these areas, and I don't want to speak out of line, but as I recall, you know, as the potential for, you know, supporting uses that would probably. supporting uses that would probably relocate once all the county facilities were located on the master plan site. And this could potentially be spun off for private development or, and those decisions weren't made at this point. Those two buildings were later phases of the whole master plan. So the library wasn't contemplated or discussed or approved or not approved as part of the original master plan.
Ever proposed.
It was part of the, it's part of the county property, and there was no discussion to put a city facility on the county property at the time we approved this master plan.
Is that something that could be considered as a viable option for one of those buildings in the future?
Think that, I think that we're getting a little bit outside of the scope of the master plan. It's currently the county's property. If the county and the city wished to negotiate a location of a library location, those negotiations would have to occur, and we would come back and amend this master plan to reflect if an agreement could be made.
So the master plan would not preclude that happening?
No.
Okay.
But it's, it would need to be amended.
But it's not currently part of the master plan.
It is not.
And I guess I have just a question of clarification. Currently, county property is non-taxable. But if buildings 11 and 12 are built as retail office, would those properties become part of our tax rules, even though they're on the county red soils plan? I know this is out of the thing, but it just, it's like, really? So I can just build all sorts of stuff?
It depends. No, I guess, you know, there's a couple way that could happen. They could partition off a piece and sell it to private development and come back on the tax rule. I'm not the tax assessor, so private uses in a publicly owned building, I don't have, I know what I think, but I don't have a definitive answer for it.
So I've raised an interesting question that when those buildings are built, will be asked again?
They will.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I don't know the answer to the second part of that.
That's fine.
They would be taxed if they were a private use.
No further questions?
Anybody else have any further questions?
Nope.
Thank you. So the public testimony portion of the hearing is closed. Does the commission have any more questions for staff at this time? Okay. Discussion.
Well, I'll make a motion, I guess, to move approval of PC 13026, Clackamas County red soils master plan, planning file 1201, and DP 1201.
A second.
All right. Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner Hankin?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Guile?
Aye.
Chair Kidwell?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, go forth and do good things. Thank you.
Do the commissioners want to entertain a five-minute recess? I'm okay.
Let's keep going.
Keep going.
Do I have to mow my lawn now?
Yes, yes, you have to mow your lawn.
He said lawn enforcement, didn't he?
Lawn enforcement.
Lawn enforcement.
I think that's the hunneth that you mean.
That's right.
Okay. And now for our featured part of the program. PC 13-23, L 13-01, Transportation System Plan, TPS, L 13-02, Associated Amendments to the Oregon City Municipal Code. Do I need to read that again?
Nope.
Thank you.
It's a legislative matter, so.
Wait, I didn't bring my sunglasses.
The website?
Yeah.
Thank you. My name is Laura Turway. Again, this is Christina Robertson Gardner. We were just going to provide a brief overview of our transportation system plan. I know you've seen this beginning part a couple of times, but for anyone watching on TV or our audience, transportation system plan allows us to accommodate growth through the year 2035. So we're looking at how people get around the city. And with any money that's expected to come in for transportation improvements, how can we best spend that to improve how people get around? And that applies to automobiles, walking, biking, freight, and so forth. We want to make sure that we have a balance and an equitable system so you can travel by all of those modes. As you know, we've been going through a process for the past year and a half to come up with our plan. We have had many public involvement events. We've had a couple of committees, a stakeholder committee, a technical committee. We've had four open houses, and we've worked quite a bit with other committees in the city. From that, we've come up with 360 improvements between the year now and 2035, totaling $221 million. Unfortunately, we don't have $221 million to implement those improvements. We are expecting about $73 million of improvements to be reasonably funded. As we talked about last time, that funding is coming from development. So if development doesn't occur, that money doesn't occur either. You can see at the graphs at the bottom that most of the projects, the projects that cost the most are auto-oriented projects. They only account for a quarter of the improvements, but account for two-thirds of the costs. I'm just going to go through these maps real quick. You can see them in the lobby, but just an explanation of the maps. We did, in the final TSP, will change this text from financially constrained system to likely to be funded and planned system to not likely to be funded. So we put all, we put our projects on these maps. Depending on what color the project number is, you can tell if it's likely to be funded or not likely to be funded. You can look up in our project table those projects, so you can see exactly what they entail. Again, this plan is looking at through the year of 2035. We haven't updated it since 2001. We hope to update it, wait, we hope to not wait quite so long next time to update it. So we will definitely update it before 2035. We showed you a staff report with our approval criteria. The criteria you're most familiar with are our Oregon City Comprehensive Plan, and then that statewide planning goals as well. A lot of the drivers include the Oregon Transportation Plan, and Highway Plan, and other regional documents. Those plans have been updated since our TSP was created in 2001, and that's a major driver for this update as well. Christina is here to get back to you on a couple of points. There were a couple of outstanding items, and parking was one of them. We wanted to enter our PowerPoint into the record. We also have comments that came into our website, that large green packet that's in front of you. We received about 200 comments over this past year on our interactive map website. Those are all those comments that came in. There's also a packet of other comments we've received that are longer, like an email form as well. So we want to make sure that we get those into the record. We really wanted to emphasize that we are listening to what people are telling us, and that we are incorporating those concerns into our plan.
Thank you, Laura. At the, two meetings ago, the, I went through a PowerPoint presentation that talked a little bit about some proposals to reduce the minimum parking requirements in the downtown McLaughlin district. And this all came from some, back to the slide that Laura had about some of the requirements. And as part of the original framework plan, the city does need to create alternative minimum parking standards for areas in downtown and high transit. What was recommended initially by our planning consultants was a minimum parking of zero for downtown. And planning staff kind of felt that that wasn't quite the Oregon City approach. And so what we came up with is kind of our way of meeting that regional transportation framework plan requirement. And that is back to these standards of looking at creating two parking overlay districts, a downtown parking overlay district as well as a McLaughlin commercial overlay district. And the boundary areas align with, in McLaughlin, generally the mixed-use corridor area along Seventh Street and High Street and Center Street. And in downtown, it goes from the Blue Hair and Paper Mill site all the way north, and now includes up to the Amtrak station. And entering into the record tonight is also the revised parking overlay map that the planning commission directed to expand to the north end of the Amtrak station. And that should be in your packet as well. Also in your packet is a letter from Rick Williams, from Rick Williams Consulting. He worked with the City of Oregon City in 2009 to do the parking study for downtown. And one of the implementation recommendations he had was to look, also to look at revising minimum parking downtown. I had a chance to meet with them after the last planning commission meeting and go through our recommended changes, as well as updating him on kind of how downtown has been developing. And attached to the planning commission agenda this evening is his letter. That looks at both, not only the proposes, but proposed changes, but kind of, I think, goes to the question Chair Kidwell asked last time, which was, if we don't have a parking study for areas outside of Fifth through 10th, how do we know this is the right number? By kind of paraphrasing your question. I think that's the challenge I gave to Rick Williams when I asked him to review our changes. He said, knowing that what you do for a living is work up and down, especially the West Coast, and specifically in the Northwest, helping cities right-size their parking, as he calls it, which actually I think I'm now going to adopt as a term I really liked, right-sizing. Now, you, as you've done enough studies, can you look at other places that are comparable to Oregon City and use that kind of as that extrapolation? And some of the, what you find in this letter is he looks at different projects, both, he looked at multifamily, suburban and urban in King County, and looked at some of the over-parcage that he found there, as well as, in general, looking at Oregon City's downtown. And he made a recommendation that he supported what the proposed changes are for the city. And I think the key thing that he wanted to get through this letter, and when we're done, I'll see if you have any questions. He sees the right sizing of parking as not a point-in-time approach. You are always going to have to be recalibrating as a city to make sure that your minimum parkings fall just below the actual use. So if you have, if you have a parking minimum that is actually above the actual use, you're doing a disservice to the community because you're in a sense mandating and overbuilding their parking. So as a city, if we could always stay just below what the actual uses and demand is for our parking, we'll be at a position where we can let the market decide if they want to go over that actual use, rather than basically demanding every development be over the use. So his recommendation is to basically continue to recalibrate through these land use code changes as we move on in the next three, five, 10 years, but also to continually work on our active parking management, the really hand and glove. If, and a perfect example he had is the north end of Oregon City. Right now, that's a little bit of overspill from downtown. So you'll see some of our secondary and tertiary parking districts for permit parking in the north end of downtown. Well, if downtown starts, north end starts to redevelop and starts taking some of those uses, we're going to have to recalibrate and change our parking management. So it's, it's one of those where you can't just change it and then walk away and it works. So his recommendation is not only to make these changes for our land use applications and for the land use part, but continually work with the city commission, our code enforcement, and parking management to kind of keep on the pulse of how to actively manage the existing on-street parking we do have. And that's going to shift over time, depending on how that development occurs. The planning commission additionally asked to look what a 25% reduction would be, and I have that on the website, excuse me, the PowerPoint, that looks at what McLaughlin would be if it went to a 25% reduction. And you'll see the top part for parking spaces per unit of a multifamily, and then you get to the lower part, it's per thousand square feet. So for example, retail, about two-thirds down, currently is 4.1 spaces per thousand square feet citywide. Downtown has proposed a 50% across-the-board reduction, which would provide 2.05 spaces per thousand. The initially proposed McLaughlin at 35% would be 2.67 spaces, and then what a 25% reduction would be 3.06. And to the right, I continually have the Fifth through 10th Street parking recommendations that Rick Williams had from the 2009 parking study. What that came from was 0.7 spaces is about half, which is of what the current use is. So 1.43 is the current, per thousand is the current parking uses for Fifth through 10th. And he recommended half of that be the minimum for that Fifth through 10th. So that's just not a recommendation, it's more of a goalpost understanding. So you have the minimum on the far left is the ITE manual citywide parking, and then you have the Fifth through 10th, Rick Williams recommended. So what I, what I'm trying to do, what staff's trying to do is, is to have a little bit of a nuanced approach in the, maybe the north end of downtown, as well as the McLaughlin district, to kind of fall somewhere in between those goalposts.
Question?
Mm-hmm.
How do you monitor this?
Perfect question. That goes back to that parking management. So the city's parking permit program is just a piece of parking management. Parking management can also be working with city, working with businesses on how to work with their employees to bike transit and bike to work, how to make sure that we are adequately using our parking permits and have them, are they the right hour timed? I mean, part of the 2009 study, we found out that we had too many long-hour parking areas right in our downtown, and they need to have bigger turnover. And so that's kind of that discussion is, as we develop our existing parking requirement, our existing parking permits, our fees, our parking hours, do they keep up with the development that's happening around it? So it's basically being a dynamically changing process and having active code enforcement and parking management be able to adjust when development comes in.
Are there mechanisms for reciprocal parking between two different businesses?
Well, right now, we have, in our city code, we still have, and it's supposed to remain, off-time parking requirements, parking agreements. But what we don't have is kind of what you're seeing the next generation, and we may have one day, but City Portland is looking at kind of in their denser urban areas where, in a sense, they're going with no minimum parking. And in the parking lots, the, and I'm not recommending this, but this is kind of that next generation, if you ever want to do that, they're basically having those owners using the free market and decide who gets to park there. My employees, am I going to rent it out? These are basically neighborhood assets that I can figure out how best to utilize. I don't know, I think we're there yet, but there's, that's why there's different approaches of how you can take them.
Because that can go hand in hand with consolidating access points, too, so that you don't have, you know, driveway after driveway for these. Anyway, that's.
And I have a question, question. And I have a question, too. Are these considered daytime? Is that what you're looking at? As somebody who finds it really frustrating to find a parking spot in downtown Oregon City, I don't understand the reduction of parking spots.
Good question. This is for, this is for new development, how much off-street parking?
New development.
Yeah. So new development, so a perfect example we had was a 19,000-square-foot office would be proposed. With the current parking downtown, we'd need a 52-space parking lot. Now, if you know our downtown, you can't fundamentally have a 52-space parking lot and a 19,000-square-foot office building on the same tax lot. If you're doing that, you're having structured parking. And in today's market, you're not going to see that happen in downtown Oregon City. So it's that fundamental, how do we encourage new development downtown without, without saying, you don't have to require any new parking, but you have to, kind of the Oregon City approach, you have to put a reasonable amount of parking. And then the difference is working with employers, parking management, and so making sure that, just like the north end, for example, right now, we don't have two-hour and three-hour minimums to make sure that employees aren't parking on the street. As we, as we move forward and develop, maybe that's what. As we, as we move forward and develop, maybe that's what that parking management starts to do, is say, no, you can't, employees can't be parking in front of these businesses, we may have to be going. And that's what, you have to separate out that one-point-in-time land use application of how big is your off-street parking lot going to be, to how best do we manage the parking we have. And because that second part is an ongoing, never-ending process.
So that's downtown, but what new development would you expect in a McLaughlin neighborhood?
Ah, there are infill opportunities along Seventh Street.
So it's mainly on the business area, not for residents?
Yeah, this is called the McLaughlin Commercial Area, so it's looking at the mixed-use corridor zones along Seventh Street, and then in this, in Center and High Street. And there are a few infill opportunities.
The map on the back.
Mm-hmm.
On the back of this. Okay. That was.
What really concerns me is the protection of our neighborhoods. They're very delicate. You know, they, they just don't have a way to fight back.
Right.
And, you know, volume of traffic going through at a high rate of speed, plus add that to off-street parking, that's a triple whammy to some of these people.
Sure. And I can take it on a couple of approaches. One, once again, parking management program, is there, you know, McLaughlin, some areas of the McLaughlin district do have a parking permit program, and as development happens, if there's some infill, that might need to be expanded. Also, I mean, if you're looking at street calming, actually, on-street parking is one of the best street calming measures you have. As you know, you, you drive based on your perceived ability, your speed, so actually the more, I mean, it's a little conversed to think of it, but kind of a vibrant, active, parked, commercial area actually slows traffic down, because you're actually trying to figure out what's, the driver has perceived barriers to driving 40 miles an hour.
Just like on Hawthorne, I avoid it. That's my traffic problem.
But I bet you don't drive 40 miles an hour there.
I just don't go anywhere near it.
Other questions for the staff?
So.
You're not done, right?
No, no. So one of my recommendations, I mean, my question really, the Planning Commission, you could do, there could be different options you could take for recommendations as this moves forward. You could stay with staff recommendation, you could move to the 25% for McLaughlin, you could present both options to the City Commission, or you could provide a different alternative. So there's this kind of many options you could do tonight, and I'm kind of here to, to assist and provide any questions.
Christine, I had a question for the hotel motel. It says conditional use under the McLaughlin. Is that based on the?
Zone.
The minimum one per guest room, and then they can, the applicant can request?
The mixed-use corridor zone actually has, motel hotels are conditional use. So any hotel or motel in McLaughlin would have, would have to be, go to a type-three planning.
Is there, is there a baseline of what's required?
Well, you would probably go to the 1.0 guest room. We'd probably go back to that minimum. Or one thing you could do is you could say that, that a 35% reduction doesn't get automatically put on McLaughlin for hotel motel or downtown.
So as a conditional use, they would have to come with the, the baseline of one per guest room, and then say, if we want less, that would be part of the conditional use.
Well, that's a good question. It's not implied, so that's something the Planning Commission can give direction. Could be implied that they get the 35%, but as part of the conditional use process, you could look at requiring additional because of additional impact. So you could go through an impact analysis as part of the conditional use to request additional. Or what you could say, and I'll refer to Carrie, you could just say that, that the across-the-board reduction is just not applicable for the hotel motel, and then that basically defaults back to the, the baseline of one per room.
Right.
So that's an additional direction the Planning Commission could give.
Thank you.
And I'll let Carrie add me. Do you have anything to add on that?
Well, just to clarify, you're saying that you're going to add in the code language that that can be set at the time the user's reviewed. You're not proposing an across-the-board 35% McLaughlin hotel motel parking reduction.
Correct. And I just want to make sure I, that that's, that's known, that that, that you kind of, you go back to the 1.0, and if we need to be more explicit, the Planning Commission wants to be more explicit that we can make sure that's, that's emphasized.
Right. And along the line of what you're saying, I would expect that the baseline would be one per guest room, and then if you wanted to reduce it, that would be part of the conditional use application.
Right. Well, it would be, actually, you'd have to get a parking adjustment to them. If it's not, if you go back to the one per guest room, you'd have to apply for the conditional use and then also apply for the parking adjustment. I mean, it's a semantic, because you'd be asking two things that night for the hearing.
At the same time.
Or you, and this is where I may defer to Ms. Richter, if you allow the 35%, could you, the Planning Commission, then say, based on a conditional use impact analysis, we think you need more parking? It's better to stay at the one and then ask for the adjustment.
Yeah. You would, I mean, in your chart here, you'd have an asterisk next to conditional use, and at the bottom, you'd have a little note that says, one per guest room, subject to a parking adjustment.
Where all conditional uses are bound, or do not receive the across-the-board reduction and must meet the minimum standards of the, of the table.
Of the table.
Yeah.
Would work.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. The next.
We're still on the parking chart. Doing the, looking at Rick's letter to us and everything, he basically just said that we're 140% overbuilt for, for parking. Granted, that's in the five through 10, I understand. So based on that, right sizing our parking seems like it would, the reduction wouldn't be 50%, but it would be 70%.
Well, that is a good question. And, and I think what we're asking for right now, this is the first foray, this is the first recalibration, we can come back. And I think that's, one thing I, when I was talking to Rick Williams, an interesting thing he said after the fact, he said, after all the work I've done, up and down all these cities, if I, if I received a call from a city that wanted to change its parking minimums, my first reaction is probably to say, half your minimums to start off with, and then we'll work from there. Funny, after, after all this process, that's really what he said, is, we're so, for a lot of our more mixed-use multimodal areas such as downtown and McLaughlin, we just are fundamentally using the wrong parking standards.
Right.
And about half ends up usually being a good starting place.
Well, what, I guess what I'm looking at or getting to is, if we went to 70%, then we would be potentially right sizing all new development. That would still leave us with the surplus. You know, if you go down to the half that you're proposing, eventually that surplus would start disappearing as people, and it just seems to me like if, if we right-sized it, left that surplus in place, then that becomes a, you know, an economic opportunity for those people that are oversized, to start looking at things like putting paid parking lots in, or making their lots available after hours. I mean, we're all aware of at least one or two places that almost violently patrol their lots and make sure that if a car.
But if it's worth their money, then it's.
So I'm a little concerned about, you know, I mean, the other side of it is, is, you know, that if we go to 50%, that makes every single space that much more precious. But, you know, I, so you're just, you chose 50% because that's basically what Rick says, as opposed to a standardized right sizing.
Well, barring having a perfect parking study for this whole area, which we don't have the time or money or ability to do, so we were trying to take the existing parking study we have with the existing land use and try to extrapolate, knowing that we did a little bit different development model in the north end and a different development model in McLaughlin. And the, the two recommendations were kind of that extrapolation. What Rick did is, he looked at the experience he's had in other jurisdictions and kind of provided backing to that. What, if the Planning Commission wants to move forward with these recommendations, if they want to, once again, continue right sizing to be more ambitious, those are all choices. You know, I think on a staff level, what I was trying to do was take that first step recalibration that was reasonable, and then also continue to advocate for that second part, which is an active parking management. They, they really don't work well without the other one.
Right. And the second thing is, on his study, you're talking spaces per square feet, and then for the first half, you're talking about spaces per unit. So I was just curious what the, if you have any concept of what the merge is. I mean, a thousand-square-foot studio apartment's a pretty nice studio apartment, but I don't know what, you know.
It's an industry standard to look at it in those different manners, so we've kept with our.
Right. But how do I, how do I do the math to understand if we're close to the 0.7 or?
Oh, right. I, I think you'd have to look at what the average studio, one-bedroom, and so, I mean, not being a, a real estate modeler, but, you know, your, your, your one-bedrooms are usually 800 square feet, your studio's usually 500 or 600, your two-bedrooms are more close to 1,200. I mean, those are just kind of.
That's fine. I mean, I didn't even have that information, so, okay. Thank you.
I think it's important to point out, too, these are the minimums. So people could build above the minimum. I think it's just offering that lower standard, you know, because, you know, if we truly do want the type of development that our code currently identifies, and, you know, potentially we could also look at increasing the floor area ratio of a building on a lot, which this would help make that happen by reducing that parking, that minimum parking to a little bit lower standard. But that doesn't mean someone couldn't come in and, and build, you know, at the maximum standard still.
Yeah, I think you actually gave us an example last time of, of a building that actually had raised parking, you know, so they mixed both needs based on what the number is.
And that was a unique topography situation.
Oh, sure. Yeah, no, I understand that. But it was, it was an example of how somebody could potentially.
Make it work.
Right. And that, and that was actually at 50%.
Right.
So they, they were, they would just meet what would be required if this was passed.
Right.
And, and actually, your comment reminds me, I, the example that you gave us before brings to mind that the one thing that a city with topography does offer as a potential is that type of tuck-under parking. If you have a flat site, you basically have to dig down to get that opportunity. But with a site that's sloped.
Digging down in Oregon City.
It gives you an opportunity to build over a lower part of the site.
Yeah. Structured parking is usually pretty cost prohibitive.
Yes.
But tuck-under is like that nice little bonus.
It's a step in between.
Middle of the pack between the two.
Right. So you, you had more presentation to make, please.
We do.
I'm still on parking.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, audience. I, I guess what I'm concerned about is that I think we have the cart before the horse. I can understand us wanting to look at parking downtown. The north end has completely different characteristics, and I, I'm concerned that we're just painting everything with the same brush, and we're not taking the time that we need to do to look at these areas individually. They're not the same. I know we're looking in the future, and you want to look at future development, but there's still, the, north end is not going to be downtown. Downtown is not going to be north end. And to have the parking requirements be the same for all of them, to me, is a little bit out of sequence. I think that it needs to be really looked at from the standpoint of what type of development that we're talking about there, which is going to be different from downtown, and the parking should be the same. It should be different if it's looking at a different type of development, regardless of the zoning.
Go to these.
I spent quite a bit of time plowing through this. And what I'm most concerned about, among other things, is that this is a two-part project. It's saying you've got parking issues, you need to have the parking management plan go along with it. I don't see us proposing a parking management plan, and I would be remiss to vote for something like this without the other part, because as a person who lives beyond the pink, we're going to get right-sized right out of our neighborhood. And I don't want to be right-sized out of my neighborhood because we're going to be calling the city all the time complaining about people parking in our neighborhood because they don't want to park downtown. As I stated previously on the record, this is already happening, it has been happening, and is continuing to happen over the last 20 years. It's going to get to a point to where all the planning and work that has been done in the McLaughlin corridor to make our historic neighborhood livable and the way we want it, it's going to not happen, because we're going to be lagging behind, because I don't see the parking management plan. Unless the City Commission is going to suck it up and adopt a parking management plan, I don't see how we can adopt parking minimums. I don't see how we can adopt this, because the two things go together. Not one happened in 2013, and then we wait 10 years to adopt the parking management plan. And I know it's an, it's an issue of dollars, and it's an issue of priority, but it seems to me, if we want to do this, let's do it right the first time. Let's not do it halfway. Let's do it the way we're supposed to do it, so that it really works. And if that means that we have a neighborhood parking management program, then let's implement a neighborhood parking management program, so that we're doing, going down the road with these things at the same time. That's what I, that's what I got out of this. And I don't see that. And so somehow or another, we've gotten very enamored with this without the other, sorry, without the stick. And so there is a stick, and I think we need to have the stick.
I, I would just echo that sentiment that, actually, I just heard Christine say that those, that this regulation and the management plan go hand-in-hand.
And we need it.
And I, I would echo Commissioner.
Whatever your name is.
Blank. Bruce.
So I, I appreciate the work. I just, I think that's a big issue.
I have a concern, because I, I do think that exactly what you said is true, that they go hand-in-hand. So without the management plan, I, I have real serious concerns about this level of reduction.
Just, just so I understand, so in downtown, we have implemented a parking management plan. So are we, are, are you concerned about the whole concept, or, or is it acceptable in downtown, and you're concerned about McLaughlin, or is it just the, the whole thing?
I, I don't have any issue with the downtown parking management plan. What I have issue with is the unintended consequences of that parking management plan because of the bleed over into the historic conservation district. And without doing something there to help mitigate that, it just is going to be this problem stacking up. I support looking at downtown and taking a look at reducing parking, because I think, you know, as long as I've lived here, I've said, we don't really have a parking problem downtown. We have a mental problem about people's attitudes about parking. And no, we can't make, wave our wand and change that, but we can do things to make downtown more conducive for development and not have, you know, again, maybe it's door-to-door, we go and talk to people and say, look, you just cannot park in front of your business if you want customers, because it just doesn't work. I mean, to me, it seems intuitive, but I know it still happens, because I see it when I'm down there. And I know whose cars belong to who, which is bizarre, but we, it's a small town, we all know each other. So I understand that, and I understand that we have that plan, but it's what the fallout of it is. And so unless we're planning on doing a parking management plan in McLaughlin to help mitigate the impacts of the parking management reduction in downtown, it isn't going to work. That's, that's what I'm talking about. There's going to be, and I mean, let's say, there are currently unintended consequences that are continuing, and they're going to get worse as time goes by. That's my issue.
And I think that's, I think the crux of what Rick Williams was saying, I think that where we are today is we have a land use development code, that this is a time to adopt a land use development code. What thing the Planning Commission can do is, you know, obviously, you're not the Budget Committee, and you're not the City Commission, but those are the kind of recommendations you can make to the City Commission, and as the City Commission moves forward with, with their hearings and the work sessions, that's some of the conversations you can have with the City Commission. Absolutely. But I, but I don't think, but, you know, parking management program is not really part of the TSP or the development code updates, but that is absolutely a recommendation that, that you can choose to, to move forward as this goes forward.
Well, I, I think that we may, you know, my, my, when we get to the discussion with the Commission, we may have to just take that part out and say, City Commission, this is a great idea, we should do it, here's what you need to do to really make it work. It needs to be a package with a bow on it, not an open package with no bows. It's got to be done at the same time.
Or don't, or there's, don't adopt the standard, and, the standard isn't in effect until there's a part.
Parking management plan. And I know.
And then it's automatically in effect when a plan is adopted.
And I guess part of the other concern I have is that there was a recent land use application that came before us, and a reduction in parking was considered without, we didn't even have any of these standards, we still don't have these standards, and it has far less parking than it should have. And so somehow or another, we've gotten the cart before the horse there, but I, I want to. But I, I want to move on and hear these wonderful people talk to us about what's going on in their area.
Well, I do have one more parking thing. Because parking's not an issue in the neighborhoods, I know that. Your chart on page thirteen, which is all the different parking requirements. I mentioned at last meeting we had about this, about single-family dwellings having no minimum standard. First off, I think that irrespective of the rest of the discussion, it should be left in there and it should say no minimum or not applicable or something so that it shows it's been addressed, that the question's been asked and it's been answered. But irrespective of that, and, and I can't remember who it was, said something about, well, the state law says we can't put a minimum standard on the housing. But this echoes exactly what Denise was saying. If there's no minimum requirement for a single-family dwelling to have any off-street parking, then all the houses along Seventh and Washington and Center can be remodeled and their garages converted to additional bedrooms and they're parking on the street right in that little purple area that supposedly doesn't, you know, have all those, you know, that has this reduced parking requirement. Now businesses are, you know, they, so now you definitely have a residential and, and business conflict, so.
Which is exactly the parking management secondhand part of it.
So, and I guess that, why isn't there a minimum? Is it, somebody said state law, but I don't remember.
It's because it's not a permitted use in that zoning designation, a new single-family home.
No, I think just in general, I think we could just.
Tony, in a subdivision, a single-family lot requires a driveway and a garage, or no?
No.
It doesn't. So there are no requirements in a subdivision for off-street parking. So it's implied that it's all on-street.
Well, it pretty much has to be.
Yeah, so what, yeah, right. So David's thoughts are appropriate.
Hey, I'm on there. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just, I got my comments out there, so.
Okay.
I have one more comment. I think the city is at a choke point with, with, with parking. We're talking about transportation through this community, which is a hub through the whole region. We're talking about downtown parking and beyond. And I think for future development in Oregon City, that we had better solve this problem for investment purposes and protection of neighborhoods and what have you. We've come to this point now, this Y in the road. We better take it, okay? The question is which way we're going to go. And my thought is we better address this and be serious about it. I agree with Denise. Let's get it right because we have an opportunity to do it. That's my thought. And the other thing is that we are eventually going to be talking with the city commission in a work-study session. So we don't have to make a motion to approve or deny these, these standards that we're talking about. In my judgment, from a political standpoint, I think the two bodies ought to get together in a work-study session, which, which is scheduled, is it not?
Tomorrow. Tomorrow. Tomorrow is looking at the plan system and then the next work session is looking more towards the code amendments, which this is the plan commission.
Is the following Tuesday, I think he said.
Well, I just want to see both commissions working together on this in, in a work-study session before a final document is, is put forth for adoption. Because a lot of issues have come up just recently, in the last twenty minutes here, that I think that the city is, if we don't get it right this time, it's going to be a long time before we could reach back and correct it.
Well, I think the, the city commission definitely wants to hear if there's a unified recommendation from the planning commission. It's nice for the city commission to see if the planning commission is unified on certain recommendations or if they've identified issues that they want further discussion on. But I, you know, it's always nice to see what, if there's, if a direction can be given.
Are you saying by motion?
Well, not, I mean, we're still, we have more PowerPoint, but I think as we move forward.
No, this is what, after we're, after you're done, are you talking about issue by issue, motion by motion? Or are we just talking by consensus?
It's, we'll, we'll have a discussion at the end of tonight and see where you're at. I mean, there's a couple of options on how you can move forward. You know, you can make a motion to approve the TSP and the code changes. You can make a motion to approve the TSP. You can continue this and we can come back and have more discussion about, you know, the things that you want to talk about and we would try and get clarification on what you'd like to bring back to us. So at some point, the planning commission is going to have to make some type of a motion. It's a recommendation. It's a recommendation from the planning commission to the city commission.
A recommendation to approve?
Mm-hmm.
Or.
Or not, or approve with this and that.
Or with conditions. Laura, go ahead.
All right, so this was the first item we had to come back to you on. The second one was mobility standards. John Riplinger of Riplinger Associates, who's our city consultant, had talked to you last.
Can I introduce, maybe we should introduce everybody just so that the audience understands who the people are in the room. So John Riplinger is, is a consultant, a traffic engineering consultant who we use for most of our, you, you probably know John better than I do because he comes before the planning commission pretty regularly. So he, he looks at most of our development applications. We have another traffic engineer in the room and that's Carl Springer. And he is the, kind of, the lead consultant for DKS and Associates. And they're the firm who's done the lion's share of the work on the transportation system plan. We do put them in the same room together once in a while and, you know, good things sometimes come out of that. Gail Curtis is in the room as well. She's with ODOT and she's actually the grant manager for the transportation system plan. So she's the one who, she's been involved in every meeting, I think, that we've had and provided a lot of support to staff with guidance on, you know, things that maybe the region is looking at and how the region is approaching various problems. This one in particular is a regional problem, not just a city problem. So she's been instrumental in helping us with that. She also writes the checks for the consultant to do the work. So she's a pretty important person as well. And then, you know, Christina and Laura and Tony. Trying to think, is there other team members that are? What's that? Oh, whom I? I'm the public works director, so been pretty involved in this process as well. And we're all, we're all working diligently to deal with, I mean, the TSP has been in front of you for a long time, these code amendments, less to less degree. And this particular issue has come up as a problem in Oregon City. And it's come up, you know, partially because we're trying to write code around mobility standards and also because we've seen some developments that are testing these standards right now. And so John's going to take a stab at this. We've had several meetings to talk about this, both on the phone and in, in person and just trying to figure out what would work for Oregon City, what would work for the state. And so John, with that, if you could, if you could take it from here.
Thank you, John. So we started on this topic a little bit about, what was it, three weeks ago in conjunction with the discussion about parking. And kind of, we've done, as John said, quite a lot of work on the issue. A little bit of clarification of some of the, the issues since then. Christina and Laura also introduced the relationship of our transportation system plan work with the Oregon Highway Plan and Metro's Regional Transportation Plan. And we are obligated in terms of developing the TSP and then applying code language to apply by the standards established by the Regional Transportation Plan. As we discussed three weeks ago, part of that is a shift to a discussion of the volume to capacity ratio as a means of determining the performance of, of an intersection. The Regional Transportation Plan makes some distinctions. The first is, we've talked about the regional center. And that's something that we've had in Oregon City for quite some time and we have often used a different standard in the regional center than in the rest of the community. That is an important distinction and there are different standards applicable in the regional center. The second category are the corridors. Again, these are also established in the Regional Transportation Plan. And Oregon City probably has an abundance of these reflecting the fact that we're on the fringes of the major metropolitan area. The corridors include the ones we would generally expect like two thirteen and Beaver Creek Road. They also include sections of South End and they include sections of Washington Street, Leland and some of the other facilities that are the collectors and, and minor arterials in the city's past designations. So we have the regional centers, we have the corridors. And then finally, we have those that are not part of that, of the, those systems. So we have crafted some language that addresses the regional centers using its designation. We evaluate based upon, and this is a growing trend in the entire Portland metro region and to some extent the state, of having the highest hour and the second highest hour of traffic. We have accepted, I think, over the years that we're going to have a higher level of congestion than we used to have. Part of it is a reflection of the financial wherewithal of the agencies. We don't have the opportunity to build ourselves out of, out of the trouble because of the financial situation. So we're establishing a, a period, the highest hour of the, of the day when we allow a considerable level of congestion. And we have the second highest hour, which will be the hour either before or after that, that requires a, or establishes an operational standard of a bit less congestion. It still is probably more congestion than we originally adopted in our year two thousand and one TSP. For the corridors, we have a, well, before I move on to that. So for the regional, regional center, we have a standard. We're proposing a standard during the first hour that we have a volume to capacity ratio that is one point zero. Essentially that means there will be more traffic trying to use the intersection during the hour than it can handle. Which means in fact, if you go out there, let's assume for the moment that the peak hour is from five to six to make things easy. That at the beginning of the five o'clock hour, there may be a couple of cars waiting to get into the intersection. At the end of the hour, because there is more volume trying to use the system than it can, there will be more cars waiting. So it's a bit of a, you know, congestion will be, will be building. We know and recognize that we can't accommodate all the cars during the hour that would seek to be there. So that's the one point zero volume to capacity ratio. During the second hour within the regional center, we'd be looking at a volume to capacity ratio of point nine nine, which is essentially we're able to accommodate, predicting we can accommodate just about, say, the perfect number of cars that can get through.
John?
Yeah.
That's clarification. One point one or one point zero for the first hour? One point one?
One point one.
Right.
Within the regional center.
Okay, you said one point zero, one point one.
One point one zero. In the second hour, point nine nine. Then within the, for the designated arterials and thruway network as defined in the Regional Transportation Plan, we would apply that point nine nine standard in the busiest hour, the peak hour, and in the second hour. Now, it's probably unnecessary, this is exactly what it says in the Regional Transportation Plan, but probably if we're achieving point nine nine during the busiest hour, we're automatically going to be less than point nine nine during the second hour. So it, it may not be something that we actually require developers to analyze, but that's the, the system standard. So again, that is what would apply to the major street network. Now for the areas that are not on the major streets, we'll take some of the, you know, the minor streets, whether they're, let's see, trying to think of, Holcomb Boulevard would be an example. It's not part of the major street network. We would essentially, we're recommending retaining what we have as the existing standard in Oregon City. Meaning we would apply the level of service standard, which is based on delay. And we'd be retaining that as the basis for establishing the, the, the performance of the system. So that's kind of the overview. We have three different systems, three different sets of standards. In any case, we'd be looking at a higher level of congestion than we have been accepting in the past. We've also, and written in the language here, is a difference between signalized intersections and unsignalized intersections. Signalized ones, because of the use of a signal, it kind of balances out the traffic for all of the, the traffic flow from the major and minor streets. For an unsignalized intersection, we're saying these standards would apply to the major street. But we all know from personal experience that when you're on a minor street at rush hour and there's a lot of traffic, that left turn from the minor street onto the major street is really tough to make. We can't do anything about that. So I think what we're, what we're saying with this standard is there would be no performance standard applicable to the minor street. Part of the, part of the philosophy that congestion is going to be something we have to tolerate more and more. I guess the final thing to, to point out, maybe this is, this is an oversight, probably should have picked up on this in terms of what's written in front of you. We have, as written here, says intersections on the regional center boundary should be considered as being within the regional center. That probably does not make, it's a designate, probably is a mistake to say that because really what we're looking at mostly are the development review. So something that is in the regionals, within the regional center boundary should have the regional center boundary performance standards applied. But a development that is outside the regional center should have the non-regional center performance standard applies in case of one of those intersections that is on the, that is on the boundary.
So.
Complicated, complicated stuff.
Is that the same intersection?
Probably at the same intersection.
Can you?
I'm sorry.
Can you explain in layman's term, you know, we see numbers here, one point one, point nine nine. What, what does that mean to the person in their car in terms of the performance of that intersection?
It is going to be more congested than it is today. As we get to the level of, of one, closer we get to, to one or when we go above one, there's going to be an increasing chance that you may not get through the green at the first, in the first signal cycle. You may have to sit there and see it go green. You will advance. It will go red. You will sit there for another minute and a half before it turns green. And as we get to, closer to one and as we have a more congested system, you may be sitting there seeing the green go two or three times before you get through. It's going to be a matter of.
During, during peak hours.
During peak hours, during peak hours.
How does that relate to the level of service A through F?
Well, it's, it is similar. I tend to prefer the, the, the level of services which, which is based upon delay. The actual delay that you encounter.
Right.
It's a kind of a different system and there's not a direct relationship. But the Regional Transportation Plan uses all their standard specifies the volume to capacity ratio. So what we've proposed, as written in the materials before you, are that where we're obligated to apply the Regional Transportation Plan within the regional center. within the regional center and on the designated arterial and throughway corridors, we will apply that VC ratio. For the things that are entirely within the city's jurisdiction, I'm proposing that we retain the level of service standard, which I think is, is an appropriate mechanism and vehicle for us to look at the performance on our local system. A part of it is because of the different way that unsignalized intersections are treated, the two-way and four-way stops. I think delay is a very good tool for that. It's, it's arguable with the signalized intersections, which is superior, and, and we do tend to use both of them in any case.
I think that's the most tangible to the user.
I think it is also.
You know, when you're sitting in your car and you're waiting through two cycles versus three cycles versus one cycle.
Yes. If you're having to wait through two or three, I pretty well suggest that you're at a volume to capacity ratio of approximately 1 or more.
Or a level of service F.
Or a level of service F, absolutely.
Okay.
Very good.
Yeah.
Yes.
Question?
Questions?
Um, your comment about development in the boundary area.
Right.
So to under, I think what I heard you say is, John Smith builds a 40-unit housing development outside the regional center boundary as defined on the map. Irrespective of whether or not all that traffic goes to an intersection inside the regional boundary, that his impact to the intersection would be evaluated as if it's outside the boundary?
Only for the intersections that are on the boundary of the regional center. And I, I think that, that 213 and Washington would be an example. So I think that if you're looking on something that is on Redland's Road, now, yeah, if you're looking at something that's, say, adjacent to Redland's Road, and that traffic goes down Redland to Abernathy to 213 and goes through Washington, if there were enough traffic, I think that you would evaluate that as to whether it, it was at, well, whether it was at point needed to meet the .99, the oversee standard. And another development that was clearly within the regional center, like the next to the landfill site, that, I think, would be analyzed as to whether or not that same intersection achieved a 1.1 during the peak hour.
Hey, John, isn't this based on the intersection and not where the development occurs?
No.
Because how can an intersection have two standards? It'll never meet the .991.
That's a, that's a good question, Carrie. I mean, this, this is just something that...
This says the intersection.
Yeah, as it's, as it's written here, it says the intersection, the Washington and 213, would be based on regional center standard. Then, another way of thinking about it would be to say that for that particular intersection, you apply the standard depending upon where the development occurred.
Yeah, I mean, because it just seems to me that we're looking at several potentially large developments along corridors, um, you know, along Beaver Creek, along South End, along Holcomb, along Redland. Um, and, but, you know, depending on where they are in the map, uh, you know, whether their impact will clearly, I mean, if you build up on the end of Holcomb, you're impacting, you know, there's only one direction you can impact, really.
Right.
And that's interior to the, to the intersection, or the, the regional center, but you might be building out, so.
I guess the, the one thought about having, and certainly, the more people we have thinking about this issue, the more likely we are to come to a good solution. So, you know, all of us should give a little bit more thought. The one issue about having a standard applying differently to where the development is is it would perhaps help encourage development within the regional center, which is a concept that is supported by the comprehensive plan and, and all of the other, of the city's activities, so.
John, I guess I want to clarify, because I understood this didn't necessarily matter where the development was. The standard that we're meeting is whether or not that intersection or corridor is within the regional center or not.
Yes.
Right? So the development could be out on Holcomb, which, you know, the, all the intersections that are outside the regional center along Holcomb would meet that level of standard D. Until you got to the regional center, and then they'd have to meet the, that's, that traffic analysis would have to show that that signalized intersection met the 1, the, uh, V over C of 1.1. And, and if it, if it didn't, then that developer would have to find a way to get it to meet that standard. Or their development wouldn't be approved.
Correct.
Okay, so where the development is, I, or am I missing something, John?
That was just based on his comment, not on what's written here.
So I just want to make, is that, did I say that correctly, or is there something that I'm missing?
The only, the only, there are only a few special cases of intersections that fall on the boundary of the regional center. And I'm fine, if we wanted, if we want to define it being the intersection performance standard, that, that is, is clearer.
Well, I, I think that's what you started off saying.
So we started off, as we started off saying, and this, this alternative interpretation was, was raised as another possibility, and...
So, so given what, what we have before us, based on that, Joe Smith is proposing a development, and as a result of his transportation study, it's found that the, the impact on that intersection exceeds the volume to capacity ratio or the LOS requirements. The developer then is required then to come forward with a mitigation for that. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, speaking of the definition of the regional center, there's a map with a...
Right.
Okay, that's what you're using when you talk about regional center?
Yes.
Okay, there's a really interesting note. The boundary of the Oregon City Regional Center is not been adopted by the city of Oregon City. So this is just, some planners have drawn some lines on the thing, but nobody has said this is the regional center. So it seems to me like that's another element that needs to get taken care of at the same time, so.
I didn't know what that boundary was supposed to mean either, so.
I, I was unaware of that, and that's good, another good example of pointing out something.
Yeah, so.
Although, is the regional center not adopted at the regional level?
It says, "or metro."
Yeah. Tony, you want to take that?
There was, the, the regional center boundary needs to be officially adopted.
Okay, that's fine. I just, we just need to make sure that that's part of our recommendation to go forward, that there be a...
When we were designated a regional center, we believed that the boundary was adopted at that point. There, the belief is that there is no official action by Metro specifically saying Oregon City's boundary.
So we, we have a loose end that needs to be tied up.
That's correct.
That has to be adopted, Tony, by Metro.
I think we can do it.
Us, and, well, as well as Metro, yeah.
I don't think Metro needs to do it. We say this is what we're defining as our regional center of Oregon City. Metro can take it or leave it.
It's not an issue of taking, it's just a process we need to go through. They're going to adopt the regional center that we send to them.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, for the, for the effect of this TSP and the effect of the VC boundaries, we can adopt our own definition of regional center. We really want it to be the same thing Metro agrees to, but right now, we don't have that per se.
I guess we have been using the regional center. We currently have two different standards, inside and outside the regional center, and we have been using those. One other thing that, I guess there are two things I would, would raise here. So in the example of the developer building a, a development on Holcomb Boulevard, he could be looking at three different performance standards at different intersections. So it's a, you know, it's a nuanced approach, and in some ways, it's going to be more complicated than what we've been dealing with heretofore, which has been two different standards, inside and outside the regional center. The other thing that we're doing here is we are essentially abandoning the AM peak hour as a performance period that needs to be analyzed, so that simplifies things a little bit. And we will have to be changing the code language and our traffic impact study guidelines to match whatever is ultimately adopted.
So let, let me just clarify, you just said we're abandoning the AM peak hour.
Yes.
So we're saying we're only looking at the PM?
No, we're looking at the highest hour, whether it's noon or 3:00 or 9:00 PM or...
The highest and the second highest irrespective of whether it's morning or afternoon?
The second highest is defined as either the hour before or the hour after the peak.
Okay.
I mean, but we have, we have consistently seen the PM peak hour is the governing factor in terms of the operational performance. Safety will, will continue to be one of the issues that needs to be addressed in traffic studies and along with the access and those other things you're used to dealing with. But this is a, the operational performance standard that is used to establish the mitigation for a traffic congestion-related issue.
Okay.
Okay?
So, um, pretty confusing issue that we're going to continue to confuse even further tonight.
Thank you.
So just, just to be clearly confusing, the, uh, the other piece that we want to add to this is that we've got, um, four, four intersections in the city that are, that may not meet that standard as well. They're all state facilities, and here they are. We're going to talk about those a little bit further, so. Laura, you want to go through these? I'd forgotten what this slide says.
Sure. So with the, with our project, we analyzed about 20 intersections in the city to figure out what their performance will be like in the year 2035, given our anticipated growth, both in the city and then regionally. We came up with four intersections that are problematic because they won't meet our mobility standard, whether it's level of service or V over C. And it's, they happen to all be on state facilities. We'll have Gail Curtis from ODOT speak to this as well. Essentially, we're proposing to look at these four intersections in greater detail. So our TSP is just a general plan, and we want to make sure that we have a, a couple approaches to this. One, we're going to add a project into the TSP to look at what those mobility standards are, and should we have alternative mobility standards for these state intersections? Two, for each of these intersections, is there an actual construction fix that we can have that will help out that intersection so it does meet whatever the standard is, whether it's the standard we adopt or these alternative standards? So in the TSP, all of the intersections that, that map of Figure 5 in, in the TSP shows all of the intersections that will not meet our standards if we do nothing. So then we have construction projects so that they'll be okay. But these four, we don't have construction projects for. We want to look into it in a more careful and thoughtful way. We are very close to the level of service standards on some of these intersections right now. You could tell two of them are the interchange on 205, both interchange on 205. The intersection of 213 and Beaver Creek Road, we're already close to it now. So we want to be swift in coming up with whatever this alternative mobility standard is and whatever that fix is. There was a previous fix for that intersection. It was this very expensive grade separated interchange that sort of took up a lot of land, but we think we can do better. We just need to take a more thoughtful approach on what that better is and what standard is, what standard would apply to that state system as well. So we have to meet, developers will have to meet our standards, and then there's also a state standard that applies. So we're just adopting the state standard. So that alternative mobility standard, we want to make sure is okay with us, it's okay with Metro, and all of these other documents we have to comply with, the RTP, you saw the list earlier, and okay with ODOT since it's their facility. Gail, did you want to talk about it a little bit?
Just before she speaks, can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Excuse me. Cleared my... All this information is really critical for us to know. I, I wish we would have had it prior to night, tonight. But I just keep wondering, the staff report seems to be going on so long, we're starting to lose people in the audience before they have a chance to make a citizen comment. I don't suppose in the plan of things that you can ever allow the citizens' comments to come before we finish the staff report, before we lose them, is it?
Sure.
I mean, just wondering.
It's late as late as matter.
It's getting late. We're used to being here late, but I'm afraid we're going to lose all these people. I was just wondering why this is all critical, if we can allow them to make comments.
Well, the main reason we wait is because sometimes their questions get answered, so they don't need to come up.
All this kind of information. I just feel uncomfortable for them.
I'm assuming a lot of the questions have to do with Holly Lane. Our next slide is the last issue that we're coming back to you on, which does deal with Holly Lane specifically.
I'd like to finish the report.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that we get a chance to come back to this, because this is very, you know, this is important when we're talking about how we're going to invest the limited amount of public funds we have to deal with.
Right.
The rush hour impact.
I just don't think they want to stay around till 11:00.
Understood.
I think they'll have to make that choice.
If we do, if we do make that break, we do want to have that opportunity to come back as staff.
Definitely. No, I, I think we should finish the, the staff presentation.
Since we only have one more, right?
And, and that actually... Okay, I was just wondering. I, I, I think it helps the, the people that want to comment actually have a better perspective of, of the whole picture. And, and I do think it's relevant to the, the comments that people are going to be making because they're, they're going to be concerned about how outside development affects their, their neighborhood. And all, all the things we're talking about is exactly that. Go ahead.
Gail Curtis with the Oregon Department of Transportation. And as John said earlier, I've been part of the project management team, and the state has funded the bulk of this transportation system plan update. And I'll try and be brief, and I would be happy to step aside and then come back later if, if you'd like. And Laura and John Replinger explained the problem quite well, I think. And that is that we have congestion levels that we have measured by a measure that results in capacity improvements. Adding right lanes, adding left lanes, expanding the interchanges. In fact, the solution that the TSP identifies for the 99 and I-205 interchange is to expand the ramps to two lanes and to expand the oncoming, um, left turn lane to duo left turns. And that fix, it does not meet the standard that we have in play. The Highway Commission has recognized this problem and has developed policy language that allows for an alternative mobility target or standard. And as John said, this problem is not unique to Oregon City. It's a region-wide problem, and it is possible that we will see a region solution. And so what we're asking you to do is adopt your TSP with the recommendations of staff where a refinement effort applies to these state facilities that will not meet the mobility target currently in place in the year 2035. So this is a long-range system planning approach and problem. And there's recognition that, as John Replinger also said, we can't build our way out of it. And there, this is also a balancing act between the local interests and the state interest. The state interest has been served well for many years, that we have had these highway projects and capacity improvements, but to some extent, they've come at... But to some extent, they've come at the impact to the local neighborhoods and the local economies. And we, the state, are really responding to the local communities who are suggesting that they want a different measure. And that measure could be in terms of looking at a more complete transportation network. And what I mean by that is that you have, you're providing your citizens and the businesses in your community transportation choices, and that we're not relying on a auto system exclusively. Increasingly, there's interest in having complete sidewalk systems, complete bicycle route systems. So as we look at this different mobility target, we can look at the whole system too and have different measurements. Another way we might look at this alternative target is that we look at it at a corridor level, where perhaps one of the intersection continues to fail, but the three other intersections within the corridor are performing as expected. So that's sort of it in a nutshell. So the next step that we're asking the planning commission is to adopt the transportation system plan before you, with the changes recommended by staff, agreeing to a refinement plan effort for the state system. The state is committed to working with you, and we will look for funds to help fund this effort. I believe the city has identified some funds, but we'd like to see if we can't assist with that effort like we have with the TSP. And so at this point, if you have any questions, or as I said earlier, I'm happy to come back.
Should there be any language in RTSP that would mesh with your efforts?
Actually, the staff has provided that by identifying a future project in terms of a refinement plan.
Okay.
The other piece of that, so that's been accomplished, and then the expectation is that there's a timeframe identified with that. And I'd recommend you give yourself a pretty generous timeframe, maybe a five-year period of time, because we may get to part of the problem sooner, and then it might take longer with other aspects. And also, the regional transportation plan is going to be updated starting this summer. And it might be that, because this problem is so pervasive around the region, there might be a regional solution, and that would save you a lot of time and effort. And, you know, this is a lively discussion, and there are some other planning efforts going on as we speak, looking at the same problem and the array of potential choices. So I want to also say that the planning commission and citizens that are interested and your council will be part of this discussion, and will be able to weigh in on what is important to this community.
Would you say one of the regional solutions might be more money?
No. I wouldn't actually. I mean, yes, it could solve a lot of problems, but we don't have, we don't anticipate to have the money. And your local, the forecast that was done as part of the TSP reflects that, as does the regional work going on, as well as the state work going on.
So the plan is to work within the foreseeable funding that's available?
That's correct. That's an important factor. We want to be realistic about the funding.
It's driven by growth.
I'm going to speak heresy here and say we need to raise the gas tax, because that's how we're going to get more money.
We could reopen the Oregon Mint.
I like it. I have a question for you, Gail. So one of the biggest things that I think that this transportation system plan and the Oregon Department of Transportation could do for many communities is to allow us to set our own speed limits on roads. We have a number of roads around our community where the community has been extremely vocal that 35 miles an hour is too high, and we would like to be able to reduce it, but we always get, oh, no, we can't do that, because ODOT says that the speed is X, and we've done speed studies. So I'm just putting that out there. There's no answer, but I'm just putting it out there.
I think it has to do with your legislature. And there was a bill that was successful the last session that allowed the reduction to 20 miles an hour for local streets. So a little step has been made.
If we could do that, yeah.
Other questions for Gail? Thank you.
If I can just add one point. The proposals that we're adding to the TSP, and I appreciate the cooperation that the state will give us on addressing this issue, but we're adopting essentially that says we're going to go study these four intersections. Three of them will be hopefully in the regional center when we get that adopted, plus one will be outside that regional center, specifically Beaver Creek and 213. Until such time as an alternative mobility standard is adopted by the Oregon Transportation Commission, we still have to function under the standards that we have in place now, which essentially means this needs, I want everyone to understand this is a priority that we need to get addressed, because we will bump up on a point where that Point 99, V over C, will not be met, which means applications will not be approved.
That was actually my question for you, is that if we have intersections that are already failing, how does a developer mitigate that problem?
He doesn't.
May I make a distinction?
Certainly.
I just want to make a distinction between the local system and the state system. The state system expects for the mobility target to be met when you are processing a zone change or Plan Map Amendment, period. It so happens that Oregon City has a standard that requires a parallel expectation for allowed development. So that's really above and beyond the state. So that's a point I wanted to make.
Does the staff have further presentation to make?
Well, I think that adoption of a TSP is a Plan Map Amendment. And we have an obligation to make sure that our transportation planning is consistent with our zoning, and that we have capacity to serve that development. And the reality is, we don't have that capacity. And that's a discussion that we are going to continue to have with ODOT and amongst ourselves about how to solve that problem. And getting that refinement plan in place as quickly as possible is the only way that I can see that we can solve this.
And I guess my question is, is there anything in all of this paperwork we've got that says what needs to be said about these four intersections?
In our TSP. We have the T... No, that's our associated code amendments. We'll have our TSP, and then we have that list of items to change in our TSP.
Oh, okay.
So it's on that list of items.
Last meeting.
Mm-hmm. And we have a slide on it later, too.
No, it's fine. Okay.
Do you have additional presentation?
I do. I swear we're almost done. Promise. This is our last issue, and then after that, I just wanted to talk our timelines and so forth. So it's been our understanding that there is some concern about how Holly Lane will develop. It's an interesting road. You can see on this map, this is purple, is our urban growth boundary. So here's Holly Lane here. Portions of it are inside the urban growth boundary, but outside our city limits. Other portions of it are outside our city limits and outside our urban growth boundary. This map here looks at the urban reserve area. So you can see right here, it's all within an urban reserve area, but again, portion...
If I could just jump in real quick to explain urban reserves, rural reserves, urban growth boundaries, city limits. So we have obviously property that is inside our city limits. It's in the city of Oregon City, under our jurisdiction. We then have our urban growth boundary for Oregon City, and that identifies our 20-year land supply. We just went through a process a couple of years ago where every five years, we would come back as a region, and we would say, do we have enough supply, residential, commercial, industrial? If we don't, where are we going to grow to? And then we would look at all the land around the region, you know? And every five years, we'd look at all the same land again. So this last cycle went around, and we identified urban reserves and rural reserves. And then there were some that were left undesigned. And essentially, that was looking at a 50-year, where we would grow for the next 50 years. If it was an urban reserve, those were the areas that we would look for, for UGB expansion over the next 50 years. If it was a rural reserve, we would not go back and continue to analyze that every five years again. It was essentially off the table. And so those are the terms that you're hearing here. So you have our city limit, our urban growth boundary, and in this case, you have 3C and urban reserve. So that's an area that we could look at to expand over the next 50 years. And if you recall, when we did our UGB expansions in 2002 and 2004, we looked at them, and we said, okay, we're going to grow in these areas. And then we would come back if it was added, and then we would do a concept plan for those areas, because there was no city, any city planning had been done before. So it was, what are we going to do here? What is the correct comprehensive plan? What's the correct zoning? What's changed now is that you have to do the concept plan before you can request to be added to your urban growth boundary. So they switched the order. Instead of expanding the UGB and then saying, what are we going to do here? It's, what are we going to do here, get the buy-in, and then go request a UGB expansion. So a little bit off topic, but a little bit of background of what you're looking at on the map.
Does that include capital improvements, water, sewer, infrastructure?
Yes, it does.
And financing?
Correct.
Okay.
On the concept plan.
On the con...
Yes.
Holly Lane has a concept plan for this in Park Place, the northern part of it. There's no planning that's been done for this section that's outside city limits and urban growth boundary. So the question is, how does it develop over time? And is the city on the same page as the county? And how does that work within our scope of our TSP, which looks through the year 2035? So the city and the county have been working quite a bit together on this, and we have both designated it as a minor arterial. The problem is, a standard for a minor arterial in the county, which is a rural designation, is different than the standard for an urban minor arterial. So this city will develop differently over time. If development occurs now on Holly Lane in sections that are outside of the city, the county will process it, and they'll look at that rural designation of minor arterial, and it will be constructed to those standards, you know, with a little bit gravel on the side and so forth. When it comes into the city, we would look at it again, and it may be upgraded to city standards. But our timing for this is over a significant amount of time. For this section, for all of Holly Lane to develop to city standards, it would have to have a concept plan done, come into our urban growth boundary. After it's in the urban growth boundary, it has to be annexed in the city, which as we know goes on a ballot and before the planning commission, city commission, for voter approval. So we just wanted to make sure that everybody understands that this is an interesting road, because there's city on both ends and county in the middle, and it may not be a cohesive segment for a while. It is identified on our regional transportation plan as significant, and that's why it's on both of our projects. As a side note, Clackamas County will be giving a presentation to you in May on their TSP, so we can talk to them as well. The city has some projects identified around Holly Lane. Carl, can you talk about the funding on any of those projects, or what those projects are?
The projects on Holly?
Mm-hmm.
What specifically are you thinking about?
There's sidewalks, so...
Oh, I mean the pieces of the projects.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. In the urban area, if it is upgraded to an urban arterial standard, then with the higher, with growth comes more traffic, comes more people wanting to walk and bike. So with an urban arterial standard, you'd actually have designated facilities for that, whereas right now, you don't. You've got a shoulder maybe. So in a rural area, that's different. The county has a different standard for what's happening on the shoulder, and they generally just want a gravel shoulder. So that's kind of the rub in this situation, between the county and the city standards. And actually, as a part of this update piece, we're giving staff a little bit more flexibility on what they do. So there may be cases where they don't want to do, maybe the sidewalk's not the right solution, but the fact is, as growth comes, you're going to have to provide for better quality facilities for walking and biking and driving through there, if growth is permitted and supported and annexed and all those things.
See, I think Carl brings up, I think, an important point is, at such time that the Holly Lane portion that's inside the urban growth boundary, if it comes in through annexation and there's a development application, what we would do is, as a city planner, we would look at existing conditions, existing structures, existing buildings, what's being proposed, what the existing right-of-way is, and then most likely, we'll be going to that modification section of our development code, which we talked about at the last meeting, which is, how do we best implement a better pedestrian or transportation system, knowing that we have an existing condition, and we work around that? So while we have the urban standard, again, that's the largest street you could build section of our code, we kind of at that maximum, most likely, we're going to be working with what makes the most sense based on what's there and how does it meet our larger goals of better pedestrian connection and bike and vehicular. So Holly Lane will never be built to exactly the same standard. There will never be a full corridor plan where everything is built exactly with this width sidewalk, this width travel lane, because there's homes right there, there's existing conditions. So you look at, how best do you implement our urban arterial based on what we have?
And again, it wouldn't be brought to city standards until it's in the city. So after, all those other steps have been completed.
So would you use like an urban growth management agreement to deal with that at all? I know that most of them, I know what the jurisdiction I work in is extremely vague and really says nothing, except for, you know, the city and county shall mesh their comprehensive plans and work together happily. And that's about all they say, but I think that there's a push to
Right.
make those UGMs a lot more specific and discuss.
And in your packet, you'll see an email from Karen. You're with Clackamas County, kind of talking a little bit about that, our existing urban growth management with Clackamas County is quite old and is a little vague.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's exactly a continuing conversation of how exactly we best coordinate projects here, knowing that there's going to be a context-specific approach to any particular place on Holly Lane.
Knowing that the nomenclature of your standards precipitate different descriptions, you're just going to have to come to the same description and develop to that standard, or at least a kind of a combination of the two standards.
Or knowing that if the county has an initial project, or if the county has an initial project earlier on, and none of Holly Lane is in the city,
Yeah.
then they may do that project, and then if at a later time, properties get annexed into the city, then we could revisit our standard at that time.
Historically, if you think of Pease Road, Central Point Road, Myers Road, those are examples of how this is likely to happen. It's going to develop under the county standards.
Yeah.
And as annexations occur and development occurs, we're going to develop to those to a city standard. And hopefully, because of the need for a concept plan, and also because it's a regional project, it's on the RTP, there's going to be more detailed planning that goes into this. A concept plan makes a lot of sense for Holly Lane, and at that point in time, we'd be, you know, hopefully doing that through an UGMA with the county or an agreement with the county, and that would, you know, bring this group and others from that Holly Lane area into the discussion, because right now, it's just a line on a map.
Right.
And I think it's a good thing to have on the map, but it's just a line on the map.
Has the city considered an intermediate road standard, like a rural street standard, instead of having your curb gutter sidewalks, storm drain, you know, and, you know, street signage and all that kind of stuff? You know, maybe there's a more appropriate application of a asphalt pathway and, you know, a sway.
You know, I don't think we chose to adopt that, but I think that goes back to that context sense of approach that we can do through the modifications section of our code. code. And we, and I think we almost assume that's going to be the approach we'll have to take. Rather than, because the moment, the moment you create what, what you think of, what that standard would be, it most likely, that would need to be amended no matter what street you're in. So we kind of went more with the...
Well, I just, I was just thinking of the sidewalks that lead to nowhere issue that, you know, was in a lot of the areas where you have a checkerboard jurisdiction, where you have city and then county and county and city, where you have sidewalks and no sidewalks and that kind of stuff.
So, do you have any more to present, or can we...
You just have the timing left?
This timeline's...
Why don't we just stop for now?
So, why don't we open to the public comment portion of the meeting? Do we have people that are representing neighborhood organizations, neighborhood associations? Okay, I'll take Paul Edgar first and then Christine Kozinski after that.
I have one, by the way, and I'm, again, there are two children that have children.
Okay.
They have to go to work in the morning or they go last day.
Okay, that's fine. So Paul?
I was going to say, a lot of us have to go to work in the morning.
No kidding.
So it's not just them.
My name is Paul Edgar. I'm here representing the Citizens' Involvement Council as the Land Use Chair. And one of the issues that I want to talk to at this point was to go back to that 101 description of parking. And I wanted to, there is a elephant in the closet when it comes to parking in the downtown area, and that's the Clackamas County Courthouse. It, by basic nature, is the central clearinghouse for all legal action for the whole county, the geographic area. And because of that, people come from all over to the courthouse and they really, most of them don't have choices. A lot of them are part of the new grain of America too. And one in five are considered to be legally handicapped. We have no access ability for them right now in downtown Oregon City. We have an excess of 100,000 people coming to the courthouse each year. We have 110 employees of the courthouse. We don't have parking or access to virtually any of it. And so when you start talking about revising parking and access, when people, the basic rights, and we'll call the Americans for Disabilities Act, we don't even come close to any basic understandings of just access. And, and then I think to myself, oh my God, you want to reduce it? You want to make it worse? This whole area, Denise, thank you for bringing it up. This parking thing is, is bigger than anyone has really talked about. Because, right now, if you take a look at these people that are coming into Oregon City from all over hell and gone, they don't have access to transit. So, yeah, we can take a little urban niche coming out of, coming up along McLaughlin Boulevard that comes in. But in reality, if I'm talking Moalala, or I'm talking out Beaver Creek, or I'm talking about these other areas, and I understand that TriMet is reducing bus service now 45% because of their severe financial problems and their $1 billion of unfunded healthcare and retirement benefits that they have no solution for. So, what we have is, we have 95% of the people coming into Oregon City just to get to the courthouse in our downtown area, and they, they have to use motorized vehicles. 95%. And one in five are handicapped, legally handicapped, and they have no access. And so, if somebody has a handicap placard, Oregon City is now the only city in metro Oregon that's charging people to park at a meter's height because they're legally handicapped. And we don't even have spots for them. Look, and we're charging them. So, our problem of parking and access is so compounded in our area, that when I talked to Senior Judge Herndon and I asked him to spell out, I wanted to know exactly how many people come in. He was not able to give me that exact number. But one thing he did come back to me and tell me in a written response was that his number one concern is access and parking. And so, I just become offended when I see some parking person, by the way, the Oregon City Parking Spot Study that was done and prepared for our city did not mention handicap access one place in the whole study. One in five people are handicapped and it didn't mention it. It didn't mention in our handicap, in our parking study, that we had a problem with this elephant in the closet. We have a basalt wall. We have an elevator, which is the only elevator street probably anyplace. And when you think about it, yeah, we're different. We're not Everett, we're not Seattle, we're not Tacoma, we're not Portland, we're Oregon City, we're the county's seat. And we have unique opportunities and unique, let's, I'll call them opportunities to solve it, to figure it out. Let's not call it a problem.
Thank you, Paul.
I could talk more, but thank you.
I'm sure you could. The next person speaking will be Mary Ann Evans.
She has leave.
Okay. Bob Nelson.
And just to let you know that this letter, it'll be entered in the record as exhibit two this evening.
What letter is that?
That Mr. Nelson's about to turn in.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm Bob Nelson. I live on Holly Lane, outside of the urban growth boundaries. I really feel like I shouldn't be here. I shouldn't need to be here. I have three questions, some probable results, three requests and a plea. And so I'll go through those. The questions are rhetorical, because we don't have enough time to answer them. But what gives Oregon City the right to plan on destroying an existing county neighborhood? What, second question is, what gives Oregon City the right to plan on, on lands outside of the urban growth boundary? And that was somewhat discussed here. And finally, what gives Oregon City the right to plan on dumping its traffic onto a farm-to-market, a small, two-lane farm-to-market road? And that is what's going to happen, because the city doesn't have the money, money to upgrade this road. The county doesn't have the money to upgrade the road. And so we just dump more and more traffic, which is basically trash, onto this small farm-to-market road. It has sharp corners, it has vertical cliffs, it has, not vertical, changes, it has side roads that you cannot see coming in because of the vertical dips in the road. You know, so what's going to happen here is degrading the lifestyle of the current residents. They're going to be increasing the potential for traffic injury and death to the residents. And the potential for landslides. It's nice to just coloring this area there. What you don't understand, or the city doesn't understand, and if I may mark it, the area from the sharp corner down through here on both sides, after the sharp corner on both sides, is landslide-prone soils. 95, 96, there were four houses destroyed or severely damaged. Okay? This is on both sides of the road. Now, a landslide doesn't have to occur at the same area every time. It can work its way up the hill and make a new top of the hill, basically, by making the top go off. And so by adding truck traffic, adding construction, adding, the water, the city likes to do water catchment infiltration basins, you concentrate the water, which is absolutely the wrong thing to do on landslide lands, landslide-prone lands. So this is all our things we can, we can expect to have happen. Problems are, if the city was to update this road to current minor arterial specs, 50 homes would be destroyed. Fifty. Over 50, actually. If it's developed, if it's annexed into the, into the city and developed, we have a narrow strip city, not much wider than it is now through that, that section. And how many more homes would be added? My request, take Holly Lane off of your transportation system. Quit trying to dump more traffic onto Holly Lane with your other roads leading to it. And work with the county to develop a good, viable alternative system. We need another road to get off the top of the hill, down to, down to 215, 205. We need that desperately. But, taking an existing county road and trying to do that is not the way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person speaking is Wendy Nelson.
Yes. Yes, again, the notes that I have on the table. Wait till you get to the table.
This will be exhibit three this evening.
Thank you. I'm Wendy Nelson, also a Holly Lane resident. I'd like to thank Mr. Mahoney for a comment that you made earlier about protecting fragile neighborhoods. That, I think that's a viable statement for the Holly Lane residents, because we are a fragile neighborhood that's in a squeeze play between the Beaver Creek Concept Plan, the Park Place Concept Plan, the urban growth boundary and the Oregon City city limits. And I, I like to say that we are not part of the urban growth boundaries, we're not part of the city limits, and yet we are included in your plans. And the development of Holly Lane will affect these landslide areas, which are both historical and documented. And if you note on page 29 and page 37 of your TSP, it states that if the street is located in a steep, environmentally sensitive, rural, historic or developmentally limited area of the city, constrained design elements would be considered. Increased construction, increased traffic will aggravate these known landslides. The traffic on Holly Lane is already too much and too fast. By adding the increased traffic from the collector roads that will run traffic all the way from Henriesy Road up to Holcomb Boulevard, will make Holly Lane a major route. And also, considering that Holly Lane is now a major route for school buses, have you taken into account the safe transportation of schoolchildren on the road that's already overused? And if indeed Holly Lane is brought into the urban growth boundaries and the plan goes into place with road widening, sidewalks and shared use plan, the road will come 24 inches within my house. So it is a personal matter for us. Thank you.
The next person speaking is, is it Kristin Byer?
Kristi.
Kristi Byer?
This will be exhibit four.
I'd just like to say, by the way, thank you for everybody bringing us copies of these. It's a lot of fun trying to take notes and, and listen to you at the same time. So thank you all very much.
My name is Kristi Byer. I'm a Holly Lane resident. I've been there about 16 years. I want to thank you for letting us come and speak before you tonight. Holly Lane is not able to safely carry the cars which the city is sending down it. Holly Lane is a narrow, two-lane road with no shoulders.
Excuse me, can, I have to interrupt you. He has to change his tape? Okay, so, we need to take just a brief break. I'll let you restart, because it's not being recorded.
Hold on, we have that brief break?
Oh, good.
So, we will take a five-minute recess and come back. Okay. Apologize for the interruption. So, Kristi, why don't you start over?
My name is Kristi Byer. I'm a resident on Holly Lane. I've been there 16 years and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today about my concerns about the Oregon City TSP. Holly Lane is not able to safely carry the cars which the city is sending down it. It is a narrow, two-lane road with no shoulder and deep ditches. It has severely limited sight distance due to rolling hills and windy curves. There have been numerous accidents on Holly Lane due to speed and traffic flow. Drivers have been clocked as high as 70 miles an hour. The road sees both joggers and bicyclists and walkers on a weekly basis. It borders a school, which in fall of 2012 added 300 more students, some of whom walk to school, and many of whom are driven to school in personal vehicles. Since the development of Maple Lane's Crabtree Terrace, the number of average daily trips has visibly increased during peak usage. I would request that Holly again be checked to make sure the amount of traffic isn't surpassing the originally predicted, that originally predicted by the development in the school. There, there's too much traffic going down it for me to believe that it's only 10% coming out of Crabtree Terrace. Holly is 40 feet wide and many homes on Holly are very close to the road. I don't think Holly can support the amount of traffic that's being sent down it. We're concerned about the additional amount of traffic and the high rates of speed we're seeing on Holly. We've asked the county to improve the safety of Holly and have gotten the speed reduced on the whole street to 40 miles an hour and the sharp curve improved. Yet the city has done nothing to improve conditions from their boundaries. Oregon City knows drivers will use Holly Lane as their most convenient north-south connection and yet they have done nothing to lower speeds, improve safety for drivers or homeowners, or provide an alternative route. In some, Oregon City is using current county property so that they don't have to provide the traffic infrastructure needed to adequately support the amount of development they are allowing. I assume the commission is also aware that the Newell Creek Canyon is a protected wetlands. Oregon, or Holly Lane is right above Highway 213 and all the water runs down to 213. Has the Oregon City TSP looked at the protected wetlands that Metro purchased from homeowners on the east side of Highway 213 and the impact that the proposed Holly Lane changes would have on these wetlands? The increase of road, the additional traffic, the weight bearing on those roads? Based on our evaluation of the TSP, it is lacking in very important data and I would strongly request that the commission answer the questions we presented before moving forward with the project that may have devastating consequences to the, to the region. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Ms. Byer, were you aware that when we were here, sorry, were you aware when we were here last week that we talked about what the right-of-way width of Holly Lane is?
Yes.
And we determined that it was a 60-foot right-of-way?
Yes.
So that's not anything that we had any control over. That was how it was, it was plotted. And so you're, just your statement here that you said it measures 40, well, that's just the paved part. But the right-of-way, you know, goes beyond that.
Right. But if you're adding bike lanes...
We're not saying that we're doing that. That's not what the plan says.
But Denise...
It says future, someday, maybe.
The right-of-way that we measured is 40.
Is 40? I bet you said it was 60.
No, it was 40 when we measured it. Yeah.
Well, he measured, he measured it kind of as by hook and by crook and that's why I asked to find out from the county specifically how wide it was. Because I, because I really wanted to know, because we're getting a lot of testimony.
It's 40. It's 40. Sure wasn't 30 and a half.
Okay.
Thank you, Kristi. The next person speaking, and you'll have to apologize, it's...
Go for it.
Jackie Codell?
Jackie Caldwell.
Caldwell, okay.
Yes. I've sort of changed what I turned in, but I'm going to go for it anyway, as I sit and listen. First of all, I'm Jackie Caldwell. I live on Holly Lane. And Holly Lane is not just a line on the map to those of us who reside there. To add to what Kristi said, there actually, according to the guy from, Mr. Nye from the county, there is a motorcycle that has been clocked at 91 miles an hour. motorcycle that has been clocked at 91 miles an hour more than once going up Holly Lane. I feel it is inconsiderate of Oregon City to plan changes to Holly Lane without consideration of the impact those changes will have on the residents of Holly Lane. Those changes will adversely affect the quality of life in our homes. We have pets, we have children, and many of us have to back out of our driveways onto Holly Lane. The increased traffic will substantially affect us.
Thank you.
Oh, you didn't turn yours on.
I did, that turned, it's stupid. Phone dialed like four different numbers.
Phone violation, phone violation.
But, oh, well.
Okay. And, and incidentally, I, I do want to reiterate, I appreciate everyone being patient, staying. And, and I guess from my point of view, it really makes a lot more sense for people to make their comment after they've heard the presentation, because now you are kind of on the same page as we are. So I appreciate your patience.
Tell them to come back when the county guy comes and talks about the county TSP.
No, we don't even, we'd be glad to know if we get notified.
The next person speaking is Lori, Larry Goldheimer?
Lori.
Lori?
That's me.
Lori Goldheimer?
I didn't prepare anything.
It's okay. You're welcome to speak.
Still welcome to speak.
Okay.
If you wanted to say ditto, then that's.
You have to come up here though to do, you have to come up here to do the ditto, though.
That's right. So the next person speaking is Rod Goldheimer?
He had to leave.
Ditto for him, too.
Ditto for him, too. Okay. And the last person speaking is Christine Kozinski.
Of course, I have handouts for you.
Christine, am I doing five minutes or three minutes?
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
I have one request, Laura. When I'm done with the letter from the hamlet of Beaver Creek and raise my hand, can I have five minutes for a breath? Or five seconds for a breath?
Yeah.
So that you can tell the difference between the two. Christine Kozinski, I live in unincorporated Clackamas County, and I am a member of the hamlet of Beaver Creek and on their board. I have presented a letter tonight from the hamlet of Beaver Creek. And it says that most of Holly Lane lies within the boundaries of the hamlet. Therefore, the proposed changes to the city's TSP will have great impacts upon hamlet residents residing here. The city is proposing the largest percentage of changes for both Holly Lane and for the hamlet of Beaver Creek. And yet, there is no member from either Holly Lane or the hamlet on the city's transportation committee to represent the concerns of more than 6,500 people. The Oregon City is placing the people of Holly Lane in harm's way. The city is developing without the need for the necessary infrastructure to support its large amount of development. The city has not addressed the speeding nor the large amount of ADTs per day that development from the city is placing upon Holly Lane. The city has proposed no measures to ensure the safety for the people of Holly Lane, which is a goal seven requirement. The city has not discussed the dramatic impacts which their proposed changes will have upon the hamlet of Beaver Creek, where many of their residents must rely solely upon Beaver Creek Road for access into and out of Beaver Creek. The extension of Holly to Henriesi is based on a concept plan that has not been approved, and has been appealed to Luba, and failed, and now appealed again. Both the membership and the board of the hamlet of Beaver Creek voted overwhelmingly for denial of the proposed changes by Oregon City to its TSP based upon the lack of safety and all of the above concerns that were brought before the membership. That's the end of the letter from the hamlet. My personal letter, I had to leave part of it out for, because I can't meet the time deadline. So I hope that you read it all. I'm Christine Kozinski. I live in unincorporated Clackamas County. Remember a few weeks ago, I spoke to you about Scott Burns, professor of geology at PSU. I am providing you a copy of his email sent to me in 2007 regarding the failure of the Thayer Road landslide. This is a landslide that cannot be mitigated. Next is a copy of an Oregonian article from this past Saturday. Couple sues over sinking home claiming a reactivated landslide is harming their former Street of Dreams home. I have highlighted important facts in this article. The home was built in 2007, and now seven years later, the home is sinking and legal action is being taken. This area is known to have locally perched shallow groundwater that can cause erosion and slope stability. The owners state they were not told the land was unstable. They claim excavation disturbed a natural spring. Lastly, the owners state they were not told by the builder about landslide studies that were performed. ORS 105.462 to 105.490 is the state property disclosure law, is a question. Is the property in a designated slide or other geologic zone? I question then, who in their right mind would buy a home in Park Place where, where landslides pose a huge threat, and why is the city proposing to extend Holly Lane to Holcomb when they can't sell any homes here? Does the city propose to tell new property owners in Park Place they are moving into a landslide area, and that insurance will cover none of their losses? If no, then the city will risk this same type of litigation. I refer you to the landslide map I have given to you. I'm sorry some of my pink markers came off. I apologize. I've circled. The first pink marker is a mark where the Newell Creek Apartments landslide. The second pink marker is a home on Holly Lane that is 220 feet away from a huge, deep-seated ancient landslide. If Holly Lane is widened here to 120 feet, this slide can be disturbed and reactivated. If so, the slide will not only block Holly, but will come down on Highway 213 as well. The third pink marker marks a home that is 329 feet from Holly, a home totally destroyed in 1996. A new home was built on a new site, but again, widening Holly here could very well reactivate this deep-seated ancient landslide. The final green marker indicates Country Village, where landslides took out several homes and further development was halted. I can give you more examples of the risk you are taking in attempting to widen Holly. Remember, the people of Holly Lane cannot be insured for landslides. If any of their properties slide in the years ahead as a result of your attempts to widen Holly Lane, unfortunately, they will be forced to look to the city to recover their losses. Are you willing to take this large risk? A resident of Holly Lane did come to city staff with an alternate plan for a new north-south connector. This route would have opened many opportunities for the city to expand its commercial industrial base. The city staff turned the plan down, saying the proposed roadway was outside the UGB. Well, you know what? Holly Lane, most of it, is outside the UGB. Dogami is ready to release the susceptibility maps in May. At this time, as I am requesting that the city keep this hearing open for these maps. Dogami is working quickly in your behalf to make the maps available to you. Oregon City simply cannot make any decisions on their TSP without this important new information, information which may well show Holly Lane as a seriously hazardous area. I'm sure you have technical questions about the map. Professor Bill Burns of Dogami stated he would be happy to help the city and the commissioners with any questions or concerns you may have. I have given you his phone number. Call and ask for him. The two biggest threats to Holly Lane are landslides and safety for the people. Without a doubt, the city is unable to meet the requirements of goal seven to reduce risk to people and property from natural hazards. The city continues to develop in the Holly Lane area and is simply shoving heavy traffic down the street. However, the city has been and continues to be irresponsible. The city has been warned many times that speeding and heavy traffic is jeopardizing the lives of the people living on Holly Lane. Yet the city proposes a roundabout on Holly with no improvements to the rest of the street. If anyone on Holly gets injured, I wonder who's going to be sued. And in ending, I request that this hearing be left open until the susceptibility maps from Dogami are received and thoroughly reviewed by the city, Dogami, and the people of Holly Lane. And I request that the hearing be left open until a complete geological review and study is performed for the entire length of Holly Lane and the proposed extension of Holly to Holcomb. Remember, in 1993, the city did not listen to Professor Scott Burns and his students when they stated, "Do not build in Newell Canyon." The city built, and the buildings fell. You don't want to make this mistake again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine?
Christine, just for the record, could you tell, say for the record, this article, this property is not in Oregon City, and Oregon City is not responsible for this house being built there?
Neither is Holly Lane.
So I, I mean, I saw it in the paper, and I know the Oregonian sometimes get things wrong. So.
No, that's true. The property that I'm talking about with the recent landslide is located at the county.
Yeah, this one.
And it's just down the road, and it has the same soil and the same slide issues that Holly Lane has.
So you're using this as an example?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Real quick, just on your mouth, can you say first pink, second pink? Your, is, are you going upward?
I'm sorry, yes, going.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm.
I apologize.
Well, they look, they fit with what your description was.
I had so much to do in a short period of time, and I wanted to get you the information that you need for your research.
Thank you for the information.
Yeah, no, I really appreciate it. I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right thing, so.
This group likes coloring.
Yes. And, and I would also just say, I appreciate that, for all of you that brought a copy of your presentation, that's very helpful. So we don't have to, I can't write fast enough to hear what you're saying and get all, everything down. So it's very helpful. I appreciate that.
Can I add one other thing? It's really nice to see some support for Christine, that she usually comes here by herself and has to take on the task. So it's great that so many people came in to help Christine and make your comments known. Thank you.
Yes.
We've been trying to do this for eight years.
And you've been carrying the load on your shoulders.
Well, I, you know, I would just say, as a general comment, this is always encouraging when we have participation in these plans. It's, it's much better to have people involved in the process while it's happening than later on coming and saying, "How did this happen?" So it's, it's good. Thank you.
Yeah, we've had several meetings where there's been no one in the audience.
That's right. Yes.
We will always hear from Holly Lane.
Thank you.
Yeah, I figured Tina, you or Ed, or Paul, it'll be here, so.
Keep it not around God.
Do you want to ask for any other comments?
I, I don't have any more cards. Is there anybody else from the audience that wanted to comment?
Come on up.
You want to.
You got to fill out a little slip later, but that's okay.
Card.
Come on up. Come on up.
No, no, that's fine.
We're here for you.
Thank you. And thank you for all that you've done. I'm less ignorant tonight than I was yesterday.
And your name, please?
My name is Kevin Manning. I'm a resident of Holly Lane, have been for 24 years. Been a resident in Oregon City for about 50 years. I live right on the street. There's five or six of us homes within just spinning distance. And my first concern was, my gosh, you're going to take my, my front yard away from me. And of course, as my mind traversed, I was thinking, well, you're going to bring in sidewalks, there goes my taxes. I'm going to bring, probably going to bring up sewer, I'm going to throw out 10 or 12, 15,000 bucks to hook up to that. And more than likely, my marketability of my house is going to go down, because who wants to live on a, on a, on a street like this? You know, I understand progress to a degree, but my gosh, I don't feel like backing out into the street. I've got a nice, really half-circle driveway right now, which is kind of really safe for me. I, the, I bought this place because I have a half an acre, and the livability is just excellent. Everything is behind me. I put in thousands of dollars to remodel this house, and tens of thousands of dollars in landscaping and so forth. And now I just kind of feel like escaping. I don't want to be here anymore, if this is what's coming down the pipe. So, but now I'm a little more learned, a little more knowledgeable, and I'll be behind Chris a lot these days, and I sure appreciate the effort she's put into it. So those are my concerns, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Yeah, offhand, I would have said, it's handy, because the bus can just stop right outside your door, and you can stop. But, but Paul keeps talking about how there won't be any buses, so that, that doesn't do any good, so.
I saw another hand. Yes, do you have a card?
No, I didn't. I was late.
I'll give you this to fill out afterwards.
Actually, I went to the county. Because the last time I talked to them, they said it was a county's problem.
Come on up and speak into the microphone.
Yeah.
And I said, I said at a meeting.
No, no, stop, stop talking till you get up to the front.
Come on.
Okay, all right. Just really fast. I just have.
State your name, please.
My name's Donna Gates. I live on Holly Lane. I'm exactly one-half mile from Redland Road, and I have an awful lot of road frontage and a lot of canyon. So just to kind of let you know, if, if it wouldn't have been for filling the canyon, the people that owned the house before us up so far, Holly Lane probably wouldn't be there because it would have been washed out. So if, if you're going to enlarge and put an extra lane on our side and a sidewalk and everything else, you're going to have to fill that whole canyon in for me to stabilize a road. And I don't know, I'm thinking that that would cost you an awful lot of money. So I'm just telling you that, you know, before they do it, like, I'm just kind of telling, you know, they need to come out and check it. We've already had one slide, lost our water. We wasn't sure if we had to go on city sewer when we subdivided, but we can't even get city sewer back to our house because we have canyon in between where we're at. We're 40, our driveway's 400 feet back. But all the canyon is right out there, right close to the road. So I think it's something, you know, I don't think whoever's doing their job isn't looking at it quite right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I don't want to be in the city. Thank you. Want to stand up and say?
Are there any other people that would like to make a statement before we close the public testimony for this evening?
Come on down.
Come on up.
Thank you. My name's Leslie Fish. I live on Holly Lane also. I only have two comments. One is, I've noticed, and when I spoke to the people that drive the, the school buses, they have been told to use Holly Lane and not use 213. Now, I can't tell you that that's fact, but that's what the drivers told me. So that, that's the first thing I'll say. The second thing, I personally witnessed, there's a major construction happening at the intersection of Hol, or home construction happening at the intersection of Holly and Maple. That is inside the city limits. I have called the Waymaster, went and saw the Waymaster once and called the Waymaster once. The trucks that are coming up the road and going down the road far exceed the weight limit that's on the bridge at the bottom of Holly Lane. Nothing has happened to stop that. They are still using that. So that's a, you know, those trucks are using Holly Lane as their bypass. I just wanted to get that on the record. I consider that a major safety issue on top of everything else, and I have nothing else to add to what everybody else has, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I don't know, if we stop them at the bridge and make them back, back up Holly Lane with their load, that'll.
Put a sign up.
We can definitely call the county on that and get county Waymaster to, is it still going on, or is that, that's no longer, right? Or is it the one on Thayer? Are we talking about Thayer Road project?
All the new homes are being built.
Okay.
And it is a dreadful road.
So, we can, we can.
So, we're, we're kind of running late, and, and I'd like to propose to the other commissioners that we continue this hearing for two weeks from tonight, and...
Do you want to leave the record open for additional public testimony?
Yes, yes, I think we should.
All right.
And that...
Is that oral testimony or written testimony?
Yes.
It's open.
Yes.
Can I make a comment?
So, what I'd like to do is, is to postpone the discussion among the commissioners until the next meeting, so that we can have a full discussion on these issues. I know everybody has a lot to weigh in on this, and we could sit here for another 45 minutes talking about what we've heard. I think, given the late hour, it would be most beneficial, especially in light of the fact that we have a couple of meetings with the city commission over the next two weeks. We would come back here with responses to the issues that have been raised. We'd have some input from the city council, and perhaps be in a better position to make determination on this.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I had a comment to make tonight that impacts a lot of these people here, that's why I was wondering if I could comment on it briefly.
Briefly.
Yeah. I'm wondering, the last time we had a conversation about this and Park Place and that area there, it's a pretty fragile area because of all the wildlife and the canyon area and slide area, and it's been bought up so many times by people. I was wondering, instead of, you had said, well, maybe you could pull the road out, if that would make the plan look a little bit more acceptable. But I'm wondering if for all the people here, instead, if we could do something under D-48, which is the extension here, to make people more comfortable, could we add like a 48, D-48A, just a small comment there, in there, that add a natural resources evaluation with a complete geotechnical survey along with a wildlife impact report as part of this plan here? Could we add that into it, where you have a geotechnical, so everybody could be satisfied about the fact that it is a slide area, et cetera, and wildlife? Would that be added to this plan to satisfy some of these comments?
At the discretion of the, of the commission, we do not have a wildlife plan code.
Well, it's more about the geotechnical. I just...
Okay, so, is it about geotech?
Right.
Okay.
And I was wondering if we could add that to that plan that would be more acceptable, because this Holly Lane, the Park Place impacts so many people.
And I thought if we're going to come back and discuss it later, could that be something? I was going to make a motion that we could put that in there as a 48A for the next time we talk about it. Well, I believe that we have the ability to make motions to add conditions to this or change the recommendations to the city council if the commission is all in agreement or we vote to support a motion to that. Is that true?
Yeah. But I guess my point, we would never build a road without doing a thorough geotechnical evaluation of where the road was going.
But if, if it makes the commissioners more comfortable to state that specifically, we can do that.
And we can certainly bring you back the Oregon City Municipal Code that specifically addresses steep slopes and hazards, so that you're aware that it is in the code and a requirement to do.
It's, I guess, the reason, I looked, I thought about it, because it's on here, is D-48 Holly Lane to Park Place or up to Redland Road, and I thought, well, maybe it would make everyone more comfortable in the long run, including myself, if we didn't take out the road as part of this plan, but instead say that people can count on the fact that it's in there. We know that you always do a geotechnical when you do roads and other things, but maybe having that as part of this plan would show that the city is going to look at it for sure, and make some people, even though people still don't want Holly Lane used, like we don't want it coming up to Redland, I mean, up to Holcomb, but having that in there might be a, a lay some fears or appease them, appease some of us, I don't know. So, I was going to make that proposal, but again, because if we're going to meet again, should that be worked into this plan, if it's acceptable to everybody? Or do we wait later? Correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think we're looking at seeing an amended plan before the next meeting.
No.
No.
I think we're going to hear what you have to say.
So, the, the process will be, we'll convene again in two weeks. We'll take additional public testimony, then we'll have a discussion amongst us, and we can propose amendments to the plan or conditions to the plan, and those will be things that we will make a recommendation to the city council. City council ultimately will be the ones that weigh in to implement the plan.
It would be hel, I mean, we're, we're scheduled to meet tomorrow with the city commission, right?
Right.
It's a work session. It would be helpful if, before we close this meeting, if we could summarize the hot topic issues, I mean, pretty much everything that we brought to you is a hot topic, right? If there's anything else, I mean, I think it'd be helpful for the city commission to have those in hand and recognizing that the, this, the planning commission has, doesn't feel comfortable having not discussed this amongst themselves, but, you know, to bring these kind of proposals, if you, if you have ideas, bring, bring them now, rather than, and try and summarize those a little bit without...
Yeah. And that's why I brought that up tonight.
...a 45-minute worth of discussion.
So, I guess if we can just hear, you know, when we meet in two weeks, it sounds like we're kind of starting to narrow down to some of the, some of the issues that we need to continue to focus on with you. And so, just a little bit more direction, I think, would be helpful for us on what you'd like to see on the 22nd. Well, is it a...
I, I think the, the things that we've, we've heard, if I've kind of gathered the sense of the commissioners, is that we're not completely comfortable with the parking proposals. And I think one of the things that's been raised is, is how the parking proposals relate to parking management plan. And concerns have been raised about the current demands in downtown Oregon City, especially related to courthouse facilities. So, I think those are issues that need to be addressed. I, I think the Holly Lane is a, a big issue, and as Tom has suggested, maybe there, there needs to be at least some language to satisfy people that that issue's going to be looked at as part of this plan and, and not just ignored. What are some of the other concerns?
In the intersection...
Modification, the mobility.
Regional center needs to be identified, and that it should be adopted as part of this somehow. Yeah. What are, what are some other issues?
Is there going to be a public testimony tomorrow, Tony?
It's a, it's a work session.
It's a work session.
See, 99% of the plan is perfect, it's just all these small things.
Is it open for...
It's always the 100%. These people prefer it.
The people can attend. I, I don't think there's public...
It's, it's usually at the discretion of, of the mayor and the commission. Anyone can attend, certainly. It'll be televised, you can come and attend.
It's tomorrow at 5:30, if you want to, right?
Correct, yes. You know, it's, it's your, it's your work session, so I think it's, you know...
And we have two work sessions.
No.
I thought we had...
Yeah, I thought there were two.
We have the 22nd.
No, no, we're talking about this with the city commission. See, there's another one on May 7th.
That's the city commission.
Those are both city commissions.
Okay, I thought we had a work session.
With them.
We had one planning commission, city commission joint work session, and we're going to go back, if we needed it, the meeting on the 22nd, and then the work session on the May 7th wasn't necessarily joint work session.
Okay.
I don't know that it couldn't, I, I don't know that it couldn't be.
We'll, we'll meet again on...
It could be.
April 22nd?
Correct.
Yes.
I can maybe look at some options for wording about parking management that the planning commission can forward on, I mean, knowing that you're not the budget committee and with the city commission, but some, some different ways we can, you can look at addressing that issue without having it as part of the TSP that's still addressing the issue.
That'd be great.
Could, just a quick second, while everybody's shruffling out, my understanding, Tony, is that the county is going through a TSP right now.
Correct.
And I would definitely say on the record, I would strongly suggest to all you folks that live on Holly Lane to get involved in that process if you are not involved now, because somehow I know these two plans are going to have to intersect, and I don't know where that is, but if you're not involved in the county side, I, I think you would be remiss in getting your comments to the county as well about the issues that they have to deal with. So, I don't know when those meetings are. I suppose you could go to the county's website and look up transportation system plan. And do we have an idea of when this transportation person from the county might be here?
The county will give you a presentation on their TSP the second Monday in May.
Okay.
At 7:00 PM, at your regular scheduled time.
So...
The other, the other thing, I mean, this Holly Lane issue is, is interesting. I get, there's a lot of passion in the room about it, but it's as if, it's as if, the feeling is, in the testimony that I hear, that if we don't plan for Holly Lane, no development or no increases to traffic will occur.
Right.
And, you know, that's, that's the challenge that we've had with other county roads that are in the city that have now become the city's problem, whether it be Glen Oak Road or Beaver Creek Road or... Leland. Leland. The, the list is endless, and it's, you know, as someone who's had to manage those complaints and the traffic and everything else, try to deal with that, having some planning effort in some of those roads early on would have made a huge difference to the people that live along them. And so, you know, I, I just don't know, you know, lots of statements were made about the city dumping more traffic. The, the city's hands are kind of tied there in terms of property rights and development. And, you know, the, the development's going to happen, and as long as society continues to grow, we're going to see increased volumes of traffic on all of our roads, not just, not just the, the roads in the county. I mean, we'll see development in the county that'll add, you know, increased traffic to the city. So, not planning doesn't necessarily result in less traffic.
But you're kind of planning on development happening, yet Holly, Holly Lane residents have kind of led to charge to block the park place concept or the park place annexations three times, so I think in their mindset, and anyone out in that area is that those, there's not going to be any development in that area until it gets annexed, and they're going to stop that annexation at every turn, you know what I'm saying?
Because that's the right.
Yeah.
Because they also have the right to annex and to develop at your standards.
It's a catch-22 situation.
Yeah.
You're damned if you do, you're damned if you don't.
Well, I, I would say that unless the city and county agree to put a gate at the division between the city and the county, that people will take whatever route they choose to take, and the city doesn't have any control over that. And so, that, I, I do take exception to the statement that the city is dumping traffic on Holly Lane. People will go where they want to go, and if they find a better route, they'll, they'll find it, they'll take a different route.
I've always wondered why all the school buses go, go there. I mean, the school buses coming down Holly Lane.
It's because the bus barns are...
I think by the dumping, they meant if they do a lot more development, which sounds like all Holly Lane doesn't want development. They don't want all that traffic there by the development.
But people have restricted rights to build on their property.
I, I do think, I, you know, I think John makes a really good point, that lack of a transportation system plan doesn't produce traffic, it only exacerbates the problems that we have. So, having a plan at least acknowledges that there's problems that need to be addressed, and it gives you a vehicle to address those problems. Without, without a plan, then you're just going to have, you know, random chaos.
And we're, I mean, I know we've got standards that say if it's an arterial, it's going to look like this. My sense is, once we delve into these, I mean, these, these projects aren't funded in the county's TSP nor in the city's TSP. Holly Lane is not. But if there was a concept plan, effort that went into that, there may be a design section that would be, let's say, pathway-separated walkways instead of...
That's why I was mentioning that we're all street standards.
Yeah, you're right. You know, I mean, but it, but it's, that's more of a concept-level design, I think, as opposed to a TSP. So, we're, I mean, I understand all the passion in the room, I get that, but at the same time, it's really a 10,000-foot level that we're trying to get through here, and with the TSP approval and...
Yeah, it's not going to happen tomorrow.
So, does...
And I think it's, I think it's good, and that, you know, this is a big document looking off of a, a long-time horizon, and we've really narrowed down what kind of the, the remaining issues are. So, I mean, we've come a long way, and yes, the, the last couple of ones are difficult to get through, and there's a reason that they're here, but I think we've narrowed that down, and we can focus on those and try and bring that back. We'll have the discussion with the city commission tomorrow, and we'll see what comes out of that as well.
Right.
And then we can come back on the 22nd and regroup, and we'll also look at, you know, potential options for, for how this could move forward for your, for your consideration at that point as well.
Does the commission have any other issues that they would like to have addressed prior to our adjournment?
One quick one, a little chart on page 13 that says, you lined up, I think it should at least say "not applicable" or something. I mean, when you, when it's silent, then there's all sorts, but I would also like to know...
We support you.
Where the, the standard of no standard for parking for single families comes from the...
We'll get back to you. I think actually it relates to the fact that this is to the site plan and design review, where new single family is not allowed in our commercial districts.
And we talked about last week...
But remodeling more than 50% kicks a lot of the stuff in, and you can remodel it exists.
Right, and we can get back to you.
This, this only applies to the MUD zone. This is not city-wide.
But it...
Yeah, we, we can, there's some nuances, and we can get back to that.
So, I just wanted to clarify to you, this is a legislative action, and you're making a recommendation to the city commission. The record is still open for written public testimony. Even when you make a decision with, with a recommendation, the city commission is still open to take new testimony, additional evidence, something we haven't heard yet could be brought forward. So, there are multiple more opportunities to provide public testimony and evidence, and just because the planning commission makes a recommendation doesn't mean that the record's closed. It's still open for new information, new written, new anything.
So, can I entertain a motion that we continue this until April 22nd?
Remove.
Second. Just going to say that.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner Hankin?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Commissioner Mabey?
Aye.
Commissioner McGraw?
Aye.
Commissioner Gahl?
Aye.
Chair Kidwell?
Aye.
Thank you.
So, you said that the second Monday in May?
Mm-hmm.
Because that's, no, the...
That's the fourth, it's the...
The 13th.
Yeah, the first hearing in May. Correct.
Yeah, the 13th, because this, you're right, the second one is...
I heard second meeting as well.
Yeah, is the 27th, and that is a moral day.
And then we changed it for that reason.
So, check the city's website, May 13, county TSP guy.
So...
More communication?
Well, as we get into communications, for what it's worth, I, I will be absent on, what, what day of the week is the 13th?
Monday. Monday.
That's a Monday, okay, I'll be here on the Monday, because I'm leaving on vacation on Tuesday.
Okay, good. I thought you were going to make me chair the team.
I was trying to figure out what date that was.
So, as some of you probably have...
Guys, we're still, we're still in session, sorry. No, you can leave.
If, if you want to stay, you can listen, but if, if you want to talk, you need to go out in the hall. Thank you.
Um, we've, we've been working on, obviously, the Blue Heron Project for quite a while now. We've sent out requests for proposals to do the master planning, visioning, and zone change process for that. Applications are due on April 15th.
Ooh, such an auspicious day.
I know, I know.
Better than April 1st.
Yeah. What we're looking for is, we're putting, we've put together a review committee. And what that, what that entails are...
Hours of reading.
Hours of fun reading. Two representatives from, from our partnership, so from Clackamas County, from the state of Oregon, obviously Oregon City, from Metro, and from the trustee. We also have Portland General Electric, the Port of Portland. These, these all have one, one spot that they will do the reviewing. Portland General Electric, the Port of Portland, a member of the CIC, a member from the downtown area, a member from the historic community being HPLO, Historic Preservation League of Oregon, and another Rivers...
A river advocacy.
River advocacy, and so we wanted to fill that additionally with a planning commission member. So, we're under a very aggressive timeline through this whole process, including the review process. What we're looking for is we'll have the submittals in on, on the 15th. And we'll go through those, put them together. We need a, a planning commissioner, if there's one available, to commit to the following in order to be a part of this. We want to have the same person through the whole process, so that means reviewing the written submittals and then participating in the interviews that will occur. So, on the 15th, the morning of the 16th, a disc of all the applications will be submitted to whoever's chosen to sit on this. And they'll have until the 24th to review those and turn in their written score to us. And then we will need someone to commit to full days for May 2nd and May 3rd to sit in on the interviews. So, if there's...
Thursday and Friday.
A Thursday and a Friday. And so, I guess I leave it to this group to decide who gets to do the fun. It's a good question.
We're expecting eight to 15 teams.
If it's any indication of the people that have been calling me, I can tell you that.
I think on May 2nd and May 3rd, I think those are okay days for me.
Well, I don't want to hog the limelight, but the reason that I want to do this is because Willamette, as a, as my position as a national trust advisor from the state of Oregon, Willamette Falls is one of my, is my project. And I could be a backup if somebody really, 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 really wants to do it, and I would commit to being on those days.
Second.
Second.
All in question. All in favor?
Amen.
Yes.
Also, was there...
You get too much sugar.
What additional group, the Willam-, uh, representing the Willamette Falls Heritage Area Coalition is also on the interview committee?
And so, this is the RFP selection, it's to get to the public process where there will be ample opportunity for public involvement. This is the process, you go to the process, correct. Okay, so, I think I saw head nods across the board, so, thank you very much. I think that's probably enough for tonight.
All right.
Okay, I'll just put in my time off tomorrow.
Okay, we are adjourned.